I did it.
What, you're recording? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Recording is on. Welcome to the Town of New Canaan Town Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. It is 7:04 PM and this is a virtual meeting. And the meeting ID is 925-167-1532, and it is being simulcast on Channel 79. Please rise for Troop 50292 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Susan Clark, Troop Leader, Shannon Castellanos-Rock, and Agnes De Giacomo are the three co-Troop Leaders, and they've brought seven of their Troop 50292 with them today. So if you'll begin with the pledge, we would love that.
Wait, wait, one second. I just gotta go back here so I can say. Nice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We can all take our seats, and I would love it if Susan Clark would introduce the troops, and they could tell us something about themselves and Troop 50292.
Sounds good. We are a fifth grade group of girls at Saks. We have 10 girls in our troop in total, and seven are with us tonight. So I'm going to give them an opportunity to say hello and introduce themselves.
Yes.
Why don't you start, Eleanor?
Okay. Hi, I'm Eleanor Clark. I attend Saks, and I'm in fifth grade. A few of my favorite things would include reading, going outside on a really nice day. It was a beautiful one today, I hope you noticed. My dog Orbit, my family, my friends, and I have a blue fuzzy dinosaur onesie that I also really like. So yeah, I hope you're having a great night, and I'll let it to the other Girl Scouts to get from here.
All right, Corinna, how about you go next?
My name is Corinna, and I also attend Saks. One of my favorite things are my two pets, Ruby and Ginger. And I also like gardening, and I really like Girl Scouts.
Great. Emma Line, how about you go next?
My name is Emma Line, and I attend Saks Middle School, too. And my favorite things are probably reading, playing with my dog Ranger, and probably dancing ballet.
Great. Mia, how about you go next?
My name is Mia. I also attend Saks. And my favorite things are reading, figure skating, and riding my bike.
Oh, cool. All right. Arshia, how about you go next?
My name is Arshia. I also attend Saks. I love to read. I can read for two to three hours, and I love Girl Scouts.
Yeah.
Great. Olivia, can you introduce yourself?
My name is Olivia. I enjoy rescuing animals from the South of the Road. I used to attend Saks. I have seven cats that we have rescued. We used to have a pet turtle that we rescued and a couple bunnies. And one of my favorite things to do is gymnastics.
Great. And then Sachi, could you introduce yourself?
My name is Sachi. I also attend Saks. And my favorite things to do are cooking, drawing, and playing with my sisters.
Great. So that's our group of girls who are here with us tonight.
Yeah.
Before we sign off, I would add that the girls have been in Girl Scouts since they were very young. A lot of them started as daisies. And the Girl Scouts of Connecticut are hosting a virtual information session tomorrow night, Wednesday night, at 6:00 PM. So if anyone watching the program tonight has a child who they think could be interested in Girl Scouts, you can go to the homepage of the New Canaan Girl Scouts, which is www.nucanangirlscouts.org. And on that website, you'll find the Zoom dial-in information.
Yeah.
And we thank you very much for inviting us to participate tonight. We've really had a great time.
Yeah. And we hope you all, oh yeah, and we hope you all enjoyed the meeting and the night. And yeah, I hope you got out and enjoyed the day today. It was a beautiful one, and we look forward to many more.
I don't think we're supposed to enjoy the meeting. I think we're supposed to, you know, we're supposed to proceed with the meeting, but this part was enjoyable. Thank you very much, Troop 50292. And I was very happy to hear that there are so many readers in the group coming out of Saks. That is great. Okay, let's move on to the next part of our agenda, which is public comments. There are several people who have already identified that they would like to speak to the Town Council. Members of the public are welcome to speak on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their full name and street address. And comments will be limited to two minutes, subject to the, because of the large number of speakers. May I remind everybody that we have a public hearing on Thursday? So we'll have some public comments tonight of two minutes apiece. There will be another opportunity to speak in two days' time. So with that, I think my first speaker is James Bosch. Are you ready?
Yep. So James Bosch, 295.
Hey, John. Don't we need to take attendance?
Oh, yeah, I skipped that part.
Yeah.
Bad thought, James Bosch.
Sure.
You'd think I'd get the hang of this by now. Rich Townsend, would you like to take the roll call?
Oh, I would like to do that, John. Thank you. Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Sven Englund.
Here.
Mark Jimski.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Mike Morrow. Mike, you're here.
I saw him.
I did, too.
He's there.
There. Maria Naughton.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Rich Townsend. Here. Penny Young.
Here.
John, all present and accounted for, you have a quorum.
Okay, now the meeting is called to order, and the first public speaker is James Bosch. Go ahead.
James Bosch, 295 Smith Ridge Road. Our community would benefit from this body and the BOE having a candid, objective dialogue in the following areas. One, what are the primary drivers of educational outcomes in an affluent, homogenous town with highly educated and involved parents? If it's not money, how can our tax dollars be spent more efficiently? In big picture, how can this factor into closing some of the opportunity gaps in needy communities while our growth rate in BOE spending was 4.2% per year from 2001 to 2019, the latest data? Is it possible to have an objective discussion without people being put into the false camps of supporting our schools or not supporting our schools? People are being factionalized with op-eds essentially saying our kids are being short-changed because our town body wants greater transparency on its spending appropriation before it be fully made. It becomes a political issue that always seems to boil down to money or outsized control being the litmus test for whose side you are on. Two, what can be learned from the Stanford Charter of School for Excellence, as an example? In their randomized pool of students chosen by lottery, 99% of students are BIPOC, 61% are low-income. Total staff-to-student ratios are 21 to 1. We're at 13 to 1. Yet they produce 85 to 90% proficiency rates in reading and math. It's not to say that we should replicate their model because one size doesn't fit all, but it is instructive to see what drives their outcomes. Three, regarding equity, why is a later start time for some at the expense of elementary school kids an optimal solution? Why are we ignoring the science that elementary school kids should get nine to 12 hours of sleep? This means some kids under the current plan will have to go to bed at 6:00 PM to get up at 6:00 AM for a 7:00 AM bus, or roughly a 7:00 AM bus. There will be more need for after-school care. That's an optimal solution? Finally, can we start to distinguish more the generally excellent quality of teachers and staff in our district from efficient spending? In that regard, was it efficient for the BOE to have $6 million in reserves in the Internal Services Fund on June 30th, 2020? Or can we do better? We are the only self-insured town in our surrounding area that separates our BOE and Town Internal Services Fund. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, James. Okay. Who's second on my list?
Amy Zinser.
Amy Zinser.
Thank you. Thank you. Amy Zinser, 50, Marione Road. First of all, I would like to thank the Board of Ed and the Superintendent for keeping the schools open for the past school year and that my three children could attend in person, which I deeply appreciate. However, I am very disappointed in the way that the school start times proposal has been handled. The Board of Ed has failed to address the many serious concerns brought to it by members of the community in response to this current proposal. The most important problem with the current proposal, which has elementary school students getting on the bus at 7:00 AM, is that it does not support the healthy sleep habits of our youngest learners. Much has been said about high schoolers and their need for sleep, but the kindergartners through fourth graders who need the most sleep of any students have been largely ignored. Children in this age group need up to 12 hours of sleep per night. Under the current plan, some students would need to go to bed at 6:00 PM in order to get up at 6:00 AM and get ready for the day. This is not only wildly unrealistic, but it leads directly to the second huge problem with this proposal, which is that it's terrible for families, particularly families with two working parents. Even if it made sense for elementary school students to start at 7:45 AM, which it doesn't, the resulting early dismissal time is disastrous for working parents who will have increased childcare needs and less time with their children. The Board of Ed has not only failed to address these issues in any meaningful way, they have also ignored the many, many concerned parents who have spoken up about these issues. It makes no sense to have our elementary schools start an hour earlier than other top-performing schools in our region. Makes no sense to sacrifice the sleep of some students in order to benefit other students. Makes no sense that our Board of Ed has ignored these very real and valid concerns. Who are they serving? I urge you to vote against any funding for this ill-conceived school start times proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Giacomo, full name and address, please.
Giacomo Longley, Elm Street, New Canaan. Thank you all for your service on behalf of the New Canaan community and for taking the decision last year to reduce the BOE budget in the face of the COVID pandemic. That action saved New Canaan residents and its taxpayers significant sums that otherwise would have been wasted during this most odd year. Your decision allowed New Canaan to essentially reinvest the savings through special appropriations to reopen the schools in the fall. If there was ever smart budgeting and strategic use of public funds, that was it. Some of you were not happy with that choice last year and publicly encouraged the BOE in October to resubmit the proposal that was sent last winter. The BOE obliged, apparently not reflecting on the challenges with the previous proposal, how it could be improved, not taking a separate public vote affirming this proposal, or even reaching out to parents for feedback, and here we are. The proposal still goes directly against the recommendation of the Primary Sleep Longer Advocacy Group by starting around a third of our students, the youngest and least represented with parents on town bodies, before 8:00 AM. Number two, makes the students who need to mostly get up the earliest. And number three, makes it exceptionally challenging for working parents with single or multiple kids in pre-K to sixth grade to actually work, as starting times fluctuate between 9:15 for pre-K, 7:45 for K to 4, back to 9:15 for the fifth to sixth grade, and then ultimately at 8:30. This proposal this time comes with a still-to-be-explained benefit of a mid-year implementation. When looking at any challenge between disagreeing parties, it's important to try to find a compromise or even a win-win solution. What has been proposed is neither, as all the benefits of changed school start time flow to one group, i.e. grades 7 to 12, and all the costs are borne by another group, i.e. K to 6, composing more than 50% of the enrollment. If we were looking for a sleep science, a data-oriented win-win, we'd have a solution looking more like a high school in Saks 7 and 8, starting around 8:15, and the rest at 9, or perhaps elementary in Saks 5, 6, at 8 or 8:15, and the rest at 8:45 or 9. The BOE will say that the high school simply must start at 8:30, no earlier due to science, and no later due to after-school activities. That's right, the BOE apparently determined that elementary school in Saks 5 and 6 start time for 2,000 kids plus their siblings, families, and staff is less important than high school sports. Despite a good deal of educating of the BOE about the specific and serious flaws in their proposal, they refuse to amend their proposal or even actually acknowledge the problems created. As such, I kindly request you once again to reduce the BOE budget and ask the BOE to find a solution that works for all students and the town in New Canaan. This is not that hard, frankly, especially in the context of 100 million annual spend.
Thank you. Next, I believe we have Jennifer Delippi.
Hi, good evening. Members, oh, Jennifer, I always forget this part, sorry. Jennifer Delippi, 70, White Oak Shade Lane. Dear members of the Town Council, I always get nervous. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, and I'm quite sure it comes as to no surprise why I am. We have come to a crossroads again on our budget and for the Board of Education. The BOE have yet to address and provide publicly or privately to the many, many inquiries any rationale behind why. The same science that explains why teens need sleep and accepted is ignored for younger children. They fail to address applied research missing from their own site, saying too early start times could be detrimental to young children learning, a foundational time in their learning career. They've not addressed the anomaly of our solution versus national, local, and global solutions of leading schools, are not transparent on why our buses are single-sourced versus a competitive bid. Budgets have doubled, and yet the choice was based on a lower price tag, not what seems to be any longer the lowest. The briefer objective never changed to serve all children. Our youngest, by the way, now represent the majority of our students, regardless of the outpouring or demand for that, ignoring their own surveys which called for the status quo well above that of, which called for the status quo well above the proposed solution. And frankly, not to be honest about a real start time. Elementary starting at 7:20 to 7:30 for all bus elementary students, not the minimum of 7:40 to allow the 43 minutes routing to enable high school students to get to school by 8:15 or 8:20, which is required for their start. On the matter of the cheap option, as of June 30th, 2020, the BOE had 6 million in reserves. Even after COVID expenses, that's plenty to pay for an ideal solution. Logistics aside, I have said it before, we have the brightest in the town to solve that for all students even beyond the overwhelming majority. Instead, discord has been sown between those who don't question anything or simply have grown tired of waiting for an ideal solution and will take anything, in actuality reversing their positions of an 8:00 AM minimum start time for all children. Social media bullying and town politicking has silenced many who are too afraid to have their positions known for fear of retribution to themselves or their children. Using fear to threaten other cuts and deprive our children of equitable start times when the money was there all along is unacceptable. There is no longer the trust from an overwhelming amount of parents in town that the Board will handle this matter appropriately and ask the Town Council to pave a way forward. I know because they now contact me, and I don't have the answers, which I wish I did, other than to ask for a transparent process and a proposal that serves the overwhelming majority of students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next on our list is James Yao.
Sorry, am I unmuted?
You're okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I just want to start by saying that I and many others.
James, could you give us your address, please?
Oh, sure. Sorry about that. My name is James Yao, and the address is 135 Braberan Drive. Okay, good evening, everyone. Just want to start by saying that I and many others who oppose this start time plan are in support of trying to get high schoolers more sleep. Therefore, it is very disappointing that where there is such agreement, there can also be such division. But did it really need to be this way? Are we being offered a plan that is both reasonable and desired by the community? Unfortunately, I contend that in both cases, the answer is a resounding no. Many of us who support alternative, an alternative solution realize that sacrifices may need to be made, and many are willing to adjust times reasonably to do so. But this change in start times is, by all accounts, far from reasonable. It represents an hour and 20-minute change for 1,000 elementary school students, making it the earliest in all of Connecticut, with bus pickups as early as 7:00 AM, a full hour earlier than other top-ranked elementary schools. And outside of the completely fabricated concept of optimal learning time, there is almost no basis for such a drastic change. Then why do this, you may ask? It appears this start time may just be the unfortunate byproduct of getting high school parents to their ideal 8:30 AM start. Now, is this plan even desired by the town? Although I believe it is grossly unfair for our tax-paying community, I honestly believe that even stakeholders do not support this plan. However, we can easily find out what works best for parents, staff, and high schoolers. Let them decide if this drastic change is the right plan for all. Simply provide the current schedule and the new schedule with the associated costs and ask stakeholders which they prefer. I don't think this solution can be any easier, clearer, or more definitive. Why are we unwilling to finally resolve this? After spending tens of thousands of our tax dollars on surveys, the BOE either ignores or deems worthless. Now, everyone has praised the administration on how it has handled COVID, and rightfully so. But this makes it all the more inexplicable that they would offer a start-time solution for our community that costs $1 million and is so detrimental to our youngest learners. Frankly, if Greenwich, Westport, and Norwalk can find a way, do we value our elementary school children any less? Or perhaps the BOE simply needs more time to understand the potential harmfulness plan and not solely focus on the needs for adolescent sleep. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And our final speaker is Irene Hendricks, please. And please tell us where you live.
Hi. So I live at 133 Springwater Lane. I am the parent of a New Canaan High School graduate, who is now a junior in college, and a New Canaan High School freshman. And I am here to actually speak about two things tonight, and so you can, as a matter of order, tell me to table my second piece until later if you want. The first item that I wanted to speak about is start times. And so in regard to start times, I think it's important to share a perspective as a person who had a kindergartner join the New Canaan school system, go all the way through West, go all the way through Saks, and now a freshman in high school, and another child who joined the New Canaan school system in fifth grade and went all the way through the high school and went all the way through to graduation and now to college. And so with that in mind, what I wanted to say in regard to this is, when my kids were small, it was hard for me to visualize what they would be like as sleep-deprived teenagers. And so, you know, I've been a working parent throughout. My husband has been a working parent. And I would really entreat us to think about the fact that this is, the start-time issue is an issue that not only came up within the last two to three years, but came up and was sort of tabled and not addressed long before my husband and I moved to this town 12-plus years ago. And so, you know, this is something that was kicked down the road once before. And I would say, to the point made earlier, this is something we have to find a solution for. And as much as I prioritize sleep for young children and I prioritize not increasing our tax base, I thought it was very, very well said that we have a lot of smart people in this town who can collaborate and come up with solutions where there is not one party that wins and one party that loses. So with that in mind, I would ask us to think about fiscal prudence and transparency, but also compassion for our teenagers who go through quite a lot of pressure and whose biology really does go against being able to go to sleep at 8 or 9 o'clock at night and get up as early as they do to go to high school. And I've seen that difference in the six-year age difference between my two children, and particularly this year with COVID, and the fact that my younger child has been able to spend more time sleeping. My second comments have to do with the library, and I don't know if that's a separate part of the meeting. So, John, you can tell me if you want me to table those comments until later, or if I can speak to that now.
We're at 2:45, so it would be best if we reserve those comments for the Thursday public hearing.
Sounds good. We'll do it.
Thank you. But thank you very much. Okay, so that ends the public comment portion of the meeting. We're next going to move to the budget overview, but before we do, I'd like to take a vote to add an agenda item. We have a general government presentation on the agenda. Town clerk, town treasurer, and first selectman. And Linda is going to talk to us about our obligation to evaluate their salaries per the statutes. I need to add a vote on those three items. So can you raise your hand, please?
I'd like to also add a moment, some time for us to discuss the Board of Education budget following Linda's presentation on the Internal Services Fund.
Okay, so let's do one first. So please raise your hand if we can add an agenda item after general government to add the vote.
I need someone to move it, second it, and then.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, Penny moves it, Steve seconds it, adding the agenda item of a vote. Raise your hand.
Wait, can I just ask a question first?
Not yet, in the middle of a vote. Well, okay, is it related to this vote?
Yeah, as part of the discussion, right?
Yes.
Are we adding, is the vote to add the item, or is there a vote on a motion?
There's a vote to add an item to the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I thought there really wouldn't be any discussion yet. Okay, so adding the item of a vote to the agenda. Raise your hand.
Okay.
John, Steve, Penny, Robin, Sven, Rich, Maria, Tom, Mike, that's nine. Mark makes 10, Liz makes 11, and Christina makes 12. So it passes. We're going to vote. The next item is, Sven makes a motion to add a discussion of the BOE budget following Linda's presentation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Who? Tom. And so, any discussion on that? We can have a discussion. Okay, there being none, raise your hand if you'd like to add that to the agenda. Okay, John, Steve, Penny, Robin, Sven, Rich, Maria, Tom, Mike, Mark, Liz, Christina. Okay, so that passes as well. So we'll add that.
I actually have, I actually have one question on that. Is Linda presenting the salaries issue, or is that coming in then, or general government, which is?
That's going to be you. That's going to be you. I was expecting you would lead us in that presentation, so. That's.
I was just saying, if Linda's doing it, fine.
Oh, it's you, Penny.
Oh, you, Penny.
Oh, you, Penny. Okay, so with that, we can now move on to budget overview. The first presenter is the New Canaan Library. We've allocated 30 minutes to Lisa Oldham, but take what time you need. Just to remind the public that this is not the conversation on whether we're going to build a new library. This is the ordinary operating budget of the library. But I imagine the new library will probably come up. Are you here, Lisa?
I am. I am. Good evening. Tucker, can you allow me to share my screen?
Done.
You, yep.
Terrific. Good night. Hello, everyone, and thank you for inviting us again this year. This year, given COVID, I have a slightly different presentation than I typically do for you all. Rather than spending a lot of time looking at comparison charts and data, I'm going to give a more narrative talk about what happened at the library in the past year. So. Okay. So, as you all know, this has been a very unusual and challenging year to deliver services, as you've heard, I'm sure, from absolutely everyone else who's come before you. And I wanted to use this opportunity not only to have you ask questions about the library and find out what's going on. It's always a great opportunity to make sure that we're having regular dialogue, but also to share some of the internal workings of the library. So first of all, we'll start with some of the financial information. So first of all, we'll start with some of the financial information because that is important, and it's why we're here tonight. This graph shows for last financial year, the audited financials of twenty twenty, the sources of our operating income. And this one shows the uses of that income. So that gives us one type of picture of what happens at the library. But the library is all about people, and it's all about service. So this past year, on the tenth of March, we had one of our most successful events of the year. We have Ann Patchett up from Tennessee. She entertained three hundred people at Woodway, and the very next day, the library closed down. By the sixteenth of March, our team had fully shifted our entire programming lineup to an online forum. We were about one of the first people to to get on to Zoom and figure out how to do programs on Zoom. Our team was revamping our website to deliver all of the digital collections and online research and IT services, everything that we normally do onsite through an online platform. By June fifteenth, we were able to start curbside self-service pickup for print books. In the time between March eleventh and June fifteenth, because of all the work that was done digitally, we saw our online, our eBooks and our e-audio books start going out in massive numbers like we've never seen before. But there was still obviously a huge demand for for real books. There were twelve thousand books out in the community the day we closed, and we couldn't take them back. When we started on June fifteenth with the curbside self-service pickup and no contact hold actually meant a very cumbersome process whereby each book had to be handled four times every time somebody wanted a book. One of our team had to go and find it on the shelf. They had to put it through the system twice and then carry it out and put on the shelves outside so that someone could come and get it. There's a picture of Ann Patchett on the last night in the real world. This is a picture of the front lawn of the library. And this is in August, the day after Hurricane Isaiah. Ninety percent of the community was without power the day after that hurricane. Excuse me, I have a dog trying to get away. Was without power. And so the day after the hurricane, our team came in with their own power cords, their own extension cords, and plugged them in and brought out all the power we could put from outside, through all of our windows. We put up tents, tables, and chairs so that the thousand people a day who wanted Wi-Fi and power could come and charge up their phones, finish their coursework, take their meetings, and do all the things that they needed to do, even as no one had power throughout town. That week, we decided that we would take the plunge and reopen. We were planning to do it the week after, and after we saw that how many people were needing our services during that week, we made sure that we had all the safety procedures in place and we reopened. I asked all of my leadership team to to send me reports about the year twenty twenty and and the many challenges. And this quote stood out for me because it focused on the positives in a year that was full of negatives. And it was the creativity and collaboration of our team that meant that we carried on delivering incredible service to the thousands of people who relied on us throughout the year. This gives you an indication of of what borrowing from the library looked like. Because we had to quarantine every book when it came back, we had huge bottlenecks back in April, May, and June, getting the books back in. We could only take about five hundred books back a day. And as I said, there were twelve thousand out on the day we closed, and then we started curbside holds, thousands of books were going out again every couple of days. So it was very hard to get back on top of everything, incredibly physically taxing work that a team of about ten part-time workers predominantly did day in and day out to keep the books moving in and out of the library, even when there was no one coming in and later after August when we could start to let people coming in. During this time, between March and December, we held another four hundred learning and cultural programs to which twelve thousand people attended. We held technology training sessions. So many of our members, people who use the library daily or at least weekly, found that they didn't have the technology skills to participate in a pandemic environment, to communicate with grandchildren or siblings around the country. They needed to learn how to use Zoom, how to use social media, and many other things that they had not previously learned. Our librarians booked hundreds of one-on-one training sessions, multiple classes, and many other things to ensure that people could learn how to communicate, work, get their prescriptions, and do many, many other things. Our team worked with the departments in the town in town hall to make sure that we were helping with the delivery of all of these various services and systems. We communicated weekly or more than weekly with fifty elderly people who we saw daily in normal times, making sure that they had not only the books, eBooks, and other library services that they needed, but that they were getting their groceries. We learned later that our staff were running to CVS, picking up prescriptions, and doing all sorts of other services for these people, week in and week out, because our team cares so deeply about the community they serve. It also in, we also decided to initiate a homebound delivery service. This is something we had thought about in the past, but we saw a real need during the early days of COVID when there were people that were either temporarily homebound, but also a great number of people who are permanently homebound and for whom getting their books or eBooks or audiobooks, movies, et cetera, is impossible without us delivering them directly to their hands. Because our team are very are continuously using all sorts of technology skills, and because we shifted to online platforms in the first week, we supported thirteen other nonprofits to continue to deliver on their missions through the technological assistance of our teams. We supported local book groups. We partnered with over twenty-five local nonprofits to provide information and cultural programs. And we carried on outreach to many isolated and elderly people for the duration of the lockdown. After we reopened, we started thinking about fundraising again. We felt in the early days of COVID that it was inappropriate to be doing fundraising for us at a time when there was existential need and people were dying. But by the time we reopened in late summer, it was back to business as usual, except it wasn't because our lit lunch, which normally attracts four hundred people to a fabulous lunch at the country club, couldn't be held live. We took a huge punt and we organized a lit lunch at night, which involved having dinner at your own home while somebody spoke to you through your television. To our huge delight, the community of New Canaan was there for us as we had been for them. Fundraising was really hard this year. It's still hard. We canceled our spring fundraiser last year. We canceled Library Giving Day. This year, we've reimagined the literary lounge, which was a tremendous success. But many of our other revenues are down significantly. We can't charge overdue fines if we can't take our books back. But our team were incredible. They cheerfully and swiftly adapted. Every single employee worked throughout the lockdown. They adapted our services to the digital-only environment. They built and supplied parts for face shields for a regional hospital. They supported older and isolated New Canaanites. They undertook professional learning to grow their skills, thinking about how we're going to work in the new library. And in return, we received scores of emails, cards, and phone calls from people in the community expressing their gratitude for the lifeline that the library had become. Okay. So that's what I had to share with you. I think you have my, Linda can tell you what page it's on. You have my budget in your books. It's nothing particularly startling.
Do you or Linda have it handy to share in case anybody does have a question on it? Linda might have stepped out. You might not have it. That's fine. Does anybody have?
spreadsheet, which is a little hard to see on the screen. I could try to pull it up and put it on there, but do we need it?
We're going to talk about it. Linda, do you have it handy?
I I do not. It's in your packets. I'm trying to recall what page it's on.
It's not important. Just why don't we hit the highlights? Your budget is, this is your operating budget, right?
It sure is. I, we only share with town an operating budget. We don't bring a capital budget to you.
And was it changed by the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance?
It was not.
That's what I thought.
I do have it here, so.
Go ahead, let's share. And I say that only because it's being referenced in all these letters I get. People say, you know, you you fund a lot of the library's budget, and do you know what it is you're funding? And so let's let's talk about it for a moment, anyway.
You bet. Let's see if I can get it up here. Okay. So I will hide. I'll hide these two columns. Just, we don't need to look at those while we're talking about next year. In fact.
We can see, I can see the whole thing on my screen, anyway.
Okay. Okay, so. Right, so this is the income side of our budget.
Okay.
So this column here is obviously the the year we're in. And this was last updated with actuals on December thirty-first. So obviously, we've had another two months since then, but it's progressing in much the same way. So for next year, we are looking at pushing up our fundraising income by another, what is that, thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand, yeah, thirty thousand dollars increase in fundraising. We've got some serious concerns about book sales not happening, that that income is completely dried up. Fines and charges, as you can see, is non-existent this year. We'll see how we go getting back into July first and onward, whether we start getting more fine revenue again. We can't charge for meeting rooms, copiers, and faxes unless we can provide meeting rooms, copiers, and faxes. So I assume that'll start to come back, the copying and faxing will start to come back as people are able to feel comfortable getting out and about again. Meeting rooms, that's going to be a function of when the six-foot distancing rules are lifted. Until those, until all of our staff is vaccinated and the six-foot distancing is lifted, we won't be able to hire out meeting rooms. So that's income.
Lisa, can I ask you a question just on the way here? What are, what are your your assumptions going forward in terms of your operations? How soon it will come up? Therefore, you know, how much expect, are there just some basic assumptions you have that underlie this?
I think I, I think I missed the end of what you said, Rich.
I'm just looking for for the basic assumptions that underlie the revenue and expenses. For example, the school board presumed COVID went back to normal starting January first of two thousand and twenty-two.
Oh, I see. Sorry, I didn't, you you meant vis-à-vis COVID. Yeah, I I think I think fundraising, I'm hoping we're going to be able to have an in-person fundraiser this fall. And so, you know, that's why we've pushed this event number back up above where it was this year. And hopefully, you know, it's, it'll be interesting to see. We're pushing up our expectations, our projections on the direct mail, and yet we're going to be running a a huge public phase of a capital campaign at the same time. So, you know, that's probably optimistic, but we need to be optimistic to make sure that we can do all the things we need to do. Our community supports the library really well, and I'm very hopeful that we can achieve this. On meeting rooms and things, you know, it seems as though there's an appetite to start rolling back some of these restrictions. The fact that people are going to be eligible down to sixteen years of age for vaccines, you know, within a month suggests that we should be able to have our full staff vaccinated by by the start of the new year. That's, that's a huge thing for us to be able to ensure the safety of of the staff that are working right on the front lines with with people coming in. So hopefully, things like, you know, meeting rooms, we can get back to doing. The book sale, I don't see us having a book sale this year. That's really challenging. We haven't had any volunteers for the year gone. That's an undertaking that takes huge amounts of volunteer labor, huge amounts of volunteer labor to make that happen. And the labor goes in for the year before the sale, so. You know, people don't realize to 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 make the money that we make on a on a book sale, we get in tons, literally tons and tons of books every month. The vast majority of those go straight back out to Goodwill because only a third or less of what people give us is saleable. It's not a very efficient or effective way of making money. Nevertheless, as long as we've got willing volunteers and a space to store those, we can make some money off of book sales. I don't think there's a huge future in that. And so, on the expenses side, not a lot of changes here. We're, I'm, I'm very sad to do it, but we've pushed down both the collections and programming budgets for the year ahead. This is just, you know, we have very little that is elastic in our expenses. So, programs and collections are two things that we actually have some elasticity in in that. And so unfortunately, we're, we have to put those down.
Have you been able to take advantage of any of the government grants and and, you know, PSP programs, et cetera?
Not PSP. We, we, we did take advantage of a PPP.
Yeah, I'm sorry, PPP.
Yeah, yep, we did.
How much did you get?
I don't have that specific number on hand, but I'll get back to you, Rich.
Thank you.
So, I mean, you can see, a lot of things are flat, put a lot of things down. But most things are fixed in this budget.
And and for twenty-two, operationally, you're going to be running, this, this looks like it presumes almost running wide open, right? Everybody back in and.
Completely. Well, we've kept the entire staff employed throughout the entire time. So that that hasn't changed. Heating fuel, we were able to see a bit of a reduction on, well, we're hoping to get another reduction on heating fuel. It's a hard one for me to put down, knowing that we never know what the next winter is is going to look like, but it has been trending downward. You know, this is a really tricky one. Looking at building grounds and maintenance, it's currently raining inside the library this week. This is the, the Lapham Wing, the 1979 wing. The, the leaks in the roof that have been, you know, they've been there for decades, but they're getting progressively worse. And when we had a day of steady rain this week, we had about 15 buckets out under the rafters, all around the computers and the books just catching, it was actually, it wasn't drips, it was raining in the library. I've got a roofer coming tomorrow morning. The guy who came to look at the roof on the children's last year at this time, when we had a similar problem, refused to repair it because he didn't want to own it and nobody would touch it for us. So we've, fortunately, we've got a facilities guy who's pretty handy and we're able to, he can get up there on sunny days and do the patches himself. But, you know, that's not a long-term solution. So we'll see what happens tomorrow. We'll see if this roofer is coming tomorrow. We'll, we'll do some repairs for us to get us through this next year. But, you know, people don't do that work as volunteers. So, you know, I don't know if $56,000 is going to be enough. But we're going to hope so. Cleaning, you know, cleaning, we've, we've increased our cleaning regime hugely this past year. We're going to continue to do that into the year ahead. Again, you know, is that enough? I don't know that it's enough, but it's what we have, so we'll make do and we'll figure it out. I'm not sure, is it, is it better to, you know, you've got the, the, your books there or this?
You've done a great job. I think that you've given us some really great context. I see that some of the most important things, for instance, salaries went up 1.9%. That doesn't sound like a lot. You know, very competitive environment you're in to, you know, for a library professionals. And I'm glad you told us about decrease in the collection and programs budget. And how, and how you feel about it. I mean, it breaks your heart and it should break, and it should break ours, that we're cutting our collections and cutting programs in order to maintain this budget. So I think this was really helpful. Thank you, Lisa. Does anybody else on the council have questions for Lisa? It's a really tight budget. Very good. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Bob Buttman. Would you like to say anything to the council? Because you're doing a great job as, on, on the board.
Nothing other than, John, we appreciate the town's support and, you know, the, the budget, the operational budget for the library has been quite mundane over the last six or seven years with a roughly a 2% increase. So there's really not a lot of surprises here and we, we manage to make do every year with the Lisa's, you know, tight management of, of the resources. Really, the only variable involved here is salary and comp, which every now and then we have folks that, you know, leave the, the library and take another job and it takes us a while to fill the job. And that's really the only variable that seems to have an impact year after year on the, on the bottom line.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Lisa. If there's anything further, otherwise we'll move on.
Yeah, I just, I'll just say the, the challenge that Bob alludes to is recruiting in a really competitive environment when we don't have the salary. That's, that's what he was alluding to there is how difficult it can be for us to recruit when we can't give the compensation that others are giving, so.
Thank God Bob works for free, right? That's what I say.
Thank God.
My pleasure.
All right.
Thank you, library.
You're welcome. Good night.
Night. All right. Next, we have general government and that is under Linda, but because we're going to be talking, Linda with Penny Young's help. So the floor is yours, Linda and Penny.
On the general government, there's two things. One is just the general overview of the budgets within the general government. And then I believe there's a separate discussion on the salaries that you're voting on. Which one of those, do you want me to go first with just the budgets overview?
Yes.
And then Penny will discuss the salaries? Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to share my screen. All right. Can you see?
No, we see the list of files. You'll have to go out and come back in.
Fails every time.
Is it on your screen, Linda?
It is on my screen. I'm trying to get it.
I'm going to hit stop sharing. You're not sharing. Now share.
Okay, now share.
No, list of files.
All right. Can you stop me again? All right, so, go there. There. And.
Nope, list of files.
Still list of files?
Yes.
All right. Maybe we'll let Penny go first while I figure out the share.
Okay. Well, I'll start with an apology to the other council members that I didn't get the information out to about the positions that the town council is responsible for discussing and establishing. The reason being that for elected officials, there's, that, that position's compensation needs to be established prior to people running for elections so that they know, you know, the compensation for that position. And it is a two-year compensation because those are the terms of, of the various positions. So first off, we have the first selectman's position. And in speaking with Todd LaVieri about how that position's salary was discussed at their level, they had neglected two years ago to adjust the salary or even discuss it, forgetting that they had to do that. And so they then went back to the existing salary, which is 140,000, 147,000, and basically did a 1% compounded increase. And so their recommendation is for that position, the first selectman's position, to be a salary of, for each of the next two years, 155,000. They did, through the Human Resources Department, they did a position comparison with some of our surrounding communities, but it's a very difficult comparison because not each of the first selectmen or mayors or however they are called in the various communities have the same kinds of responsibilities. For instance, in Darian, their administrative person has a great deal more of the responsibilities than the first selectman does. So I caution against, you know, people going to do a community by community comparison. Do you want to do this one by one?
Yeah, why don't you present all three and then we'll do, do a vote in the end.
Okay.
And you see?
Okay, so, so as I was saying, that, that, that really is not a valid comparison because of the responsibility differences in each of the communities. So I think we need to be they, just basically concerned about how we want to compensate our first selectman, given the level of responsibilities that that position holds. And as I said, the recommendation from the Board of Finance to get, get that up to a compounded increase level is 155,000.
You see it on my screen?
Yes.
All right, I did a search on the word Penny. I found your last email and I think so that everybody can see. First select, current, 147, DOF, close, 155. That's what we're voting on?
That's, yes.
Okay. 20,000 and.
Wait a minute, let me, let me, let me do, let me do them one by one.
Okay.
Okay, they did not discuss the selectman's compensation. That hasn't changed in a number of years. And I think they felt that it was a less workload-related compensation than the first selectman's position is.
Okay.
So then let me go to the treasurer. As you know, for a number of years, my dog is having a little fit here. Anyway, for a number of years, the, the treasurer's position was, I mean, something like 1,200 bucks and really did not have much of a workload attached to it. A number of years ago, probably six, I want to say, we increased the treasurer's salary to 20,000. It is a part-time position. Cheryl Jones indicates to me that two years ago, we attached to that salary a COA escalator. I didn't remember that and I'm sure Linda can put a little color on that. And then the town clerk's position also needs to be established this, this budget. It is currently at 109, 188. And the recommendation would be to have that enjoy a every year for two years, COA increase. That is yet to be decided, but it's anticipated that it would be a 2.25%. And that gets so noted, you know, in the, in the budget that, that it is subject to, you know, a COA increase every year. So those are the three proposed changes.
Does anybody want to talk about this? Do you want me to put that screen back up? Opening it up to the discussion, Town Council. Christina, go ahead.
Okay, so in reference to the town clerk's position, I noticed this year because of the changes in voting and the absentee voting and the ballot box and the number of votes that came in, the amount of work for the town clerk substantially increased. And from my understanding, what's going on in Connecticut, in Hartford, this is only going to increase even more during the next couple of cycles. So I think that at some point, we have to look at the responsibilities and the hours that this requires because it was really amazing what our town clerk was able to pull off. And I think it has to be recognized and it's not just a COA adjustment that is deserving of a review.
Good point. It was a strange year for COVID and it was a strange year for elections. So, right, we'll have to review them. Anybody else?
I think you can make the same argument about all the positions, though. I mean, first selectman, I get, I get emails at, from three o'clock in the morning, so this is not a, I think, I think everybody is experiencing this, a similar kind of change in their commitment, their responsibility hours.
John, John, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Penny, the, you referenced a number. I just want to be clear. I heard you right. You said they increased, increased it by 1% compounded?
That was Todd LaVieri's explanation to me as to how they came up with 155 for the first selectman.
Okay, is it, that, that number doesn't chide, but.
Yeah, I, I didn't go and, you know, calculate on the numbers, but that is what their recommendation is. And Penny, just to confirm, the, the COA that you're expecting for, I guess, the treasurer and the town clerk is, is, we're hoping to be two and a quarter at a, at a minimum? That is subject to, you know, the contract negotiations. And so that we would have, I have, you know, we have no input into that. Okay, I would just second Christina's point about, and, and I agree, our, I, I think our first selectman worked pretty tirelessly and I'm not quibbling about, you know, about that at all. I just, I also want to just emphasize that since I was in, particularly involved this year with, with helping get people registered to vote and stuff, I, I do think that the town clerks, and there's, the town clerk and the staff worked really, really hard. And, and in the days to come, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with election laws in Connecticut and if they change. But if they do change, there, there may be more work for the town clerk than there is today, so. That's an interesting point to discuss. I will say that our town clerk, when you look at the data that was submitted to the Human Resources Department, our town clerk's position is on the very high side of the, of the curve.
Just a procedural question. Is this like the rest of the budget where we're not at liberty to add what, what the Board of Finance is recommending, or is this a separate process?
It is our, it is ours to decide.
Okay.
So we can increase it.
Well, the, the.
So in this instance, sorry if I may, so in this instance, the Board of Finance budget does include the provisions for the, if you, if you, if you approve, if you approve the first election's budget, if you approve the first selectman's salary, it's already included in the budget that's, that the Board of Finance recommended to you. If you don't, then we will knock it down. For the other increases, the, the ones that you're contemplating for town clerk, because we have union negotiations that are taking place, all those are in a contingency account. And therefore, we will fund that from the contingency. And so you would not, you would not need to increase the budget to make those adjustments either.
Right. Thank you.
So the town clerk is represented in collective bargaining?
No, no.
No, it is subject to this percentage that is established.
Well, do we have liberty to do more or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do.
So what's the point of referencing?
You know, I will have, I will have to say that, that the, that the town clerk's position, just about every single cycle, the, the the subject is raised that it, that the, that the compensation is never enough. And when you look at, you know, the comparative salaries across the state, as I said, we are on very high side of how town clerks are compensated.
That, that surge in effort, is that likely to, to continue throughout an entire year, or is that more episodic for the people that have raised that for town clerk?
Tom, I don't think elections are going to get any easier, that's for sure, but.
But elections don't last the whole year?
No.
No, but the amount of work is just tremendous and this year proved it.
Well, then perhaps that, that is a request from the town clerk for support staffing. You know, and, and in this case, where you had no way of knowing what the increased requirements were going to be, I think there was a request for additional support staff. And so it can be handled that way with, with additional staff. I just think we can't overlook that there is additional.
I just think we can't overlook that there is additional responsibility, there is additional stress, there is change, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. That's all. I just, and it's good to know that there's at least a two and a quarter-ish percent sort of guarantee. I just, I wouldn't want it to be less than that, as, you know, I think that.
No, it's not. It, it, we, we tie it to, you know, what the negotiated percentage is.
When you showed that slide earlier, Penny, there was, I think it's an eight dollar increase. What, I mean, it's either, it should either be flat or what, where's that eight dollars coming from?
I think that was a mistake. That was a mistake, Steve. The, the second number, wasn't the second number her salary?
Correct.
A hundred and nine, one hundred and eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one oh nine, one eighty-eight versus one oh nine, one eighty?
No.
Am I reading that right?
Yeah, that's what it's.
The actual is a hundred, the, the reds are the actuals.
So what, what does that mean? So is that, are we looking, those red numbers are this year's or?
Yes.
Cause I, I look at current, I, I rate, I read this as current first selectman, one forty-seven, the proposed is one fifty-five. The treasurer is at twenty, proposes an increase of nine forty-sixty-six.
No, 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 that, no, no, the, okay, so what was sent to me by the town, by the Human Resources then is kind of apples and oranges, as I always say. The current first selectman is a hundred and forty-seven, proposed is a hundred and fifty-five. Current treasurer is twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty. Current town clerk is a hundred and nine, one hundred and eighty-eight. And so the increase for the next two years would be the negotiated percentage increase each of those two years.
So currently, Penny, the only, the only quote-unquote increase is the one forty-seven to one fifty-five. Am I reading that right? So the others remain unchanged.
And the, the other increases are negotiated percentages.
They will change, right? They will change roughly to.
Oh, they will change as soon, as soon as the negotiations are completed. Whatever that percentage is gets applied to the treasurer's spot and the town clerk's spot. But the first selectmen's is a flat recommended salary for each of the two years.
Penny, and on the first selectman, it goes into effect in November, not July, and so what you have in the budget is a prorated amount. So the full, one fifty-five is the full salary, but that's not what the increase will be in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two.
Linda, I believe it starts December one, because the election is.
Yes.
Right.
Correct. So we have a prorated amount in the budget.
Right.
So seems to me in the interest of time, we'd like to do one of two things. We could either entertain a motion where the budget is sent to us by the Board of Selectmen and vote, and, and take a motion and, and vote on it. Or if somebody feels strongly that we should be making changes, since we haven't got enough information now, and I don't have the charts in front of me, I don't even know what those changes are precisely, then somebody could make a motion to table.
What, what, what charts don't you have in front of you?
Well, since there seems to be some confusion as to exactly what the treasurers around the county make and, and what is the change?
So I sent that, I sent that chart to you.
Well, I don't have it in front of me to put on the screen at this meeting, so if somebody doesn't feel comfortable, make that motion and that we table this. Otherwise, we should make a motion to move forward. And I'm not going to presume that everybody's.
We, did we all get that chart? Cause I, 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 I don't remember getting anything other than the last email.
Yes. It was sent at, at five o'clock this afternoon, unfortunately, because I, I had just gotten it, so.
So that, you know, maybe, 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 maybe because of the short notice, maybe it is worth tabling it for some time. I mean, that, that's my, I mean, cause I'm still confused, so. And I, I, I wanna, I don't want to not give it its, its, its due process.
Do we have the same deadlines for, as for the rest of the budget, or can this be tabled to after the end of the month?
No.
We can table it until we approve the first day. It just has to be approved prior to election.
And so a couple more days, maybe?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm throwing that out just as a, just to, you know, get a fresh look.
Done in, in Thursday's budget.
Well, Thursday, the public hearing, right? And so you're not voting on the budget until next week, and so you could take action on Thursday or take action on Tuesday, just before you vote.
All right, so I'd like somebody to make a motion that we table this to Thursday, we pick it up. We don't have to take action on Thursday, but I think we should at least take it up on Thursday. Mark, do you have a motion?
Uh, uh, yes. Motion, motion to push till Thursday.
Second.
Second, Christina, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, the motion carries. It's tabled till Thursday. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Penny. We'll get more charts to everybody before Thursday and.
Sure.
Good.
Absolutely.
All right, so next on the agenda, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to propose this to Dr. Letzey. We have Internal Service Fund.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We have Internal Service Fund, and that's a conversation by Linda talking about the, the purpose of it, how it's funded, and what the Board of Finance maybe was thinking. And Linda thought it might be useful if he went before the Board of Education. He volunteered to go before the Board of Education, because maybe the Board of Education's presentation might reflect upon his comments. I don't, I don't have a preference. Dr. Letzey, would you prefer to go first or second?
Oh, excuse me, John, if I could just interrupt. I think Linda still needs to present the general government budget.
Yep.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
Okay.
I still want my question answered. Does Dr. Letzey want to go first or second?
We were prepared to go, but it, Linda's been a wonderful partner all along, so if he has a strong preference one way or the other, we can certainly defer to him.
Okay, so, so Linda thought it made, was more appropriate that he go first, so we'll do that unless anybody objects. Okay, Linda, so the floor is yours. Why don't you take us through general government? And do you want to try and share your screen?
I did, and I sent them to you if for some reason it does not work this time around.
It does.
It does. All right, there we go. Thank you, Dr. Keating. She was helping me on, on the backend there. We work as a team. So just a brief overview of general government. We have multiple departments within general government. I'm going to start by just talking about the revenues, and then we'll go over the expenses in general government. Most of you have sat through the individual presentations of the departments, so I'm not going to spend on too much time, but I just want to, just focus on some of the key changes. So what we book under the Finance Department, the major revenue sources are interest on investments. We do capture the ECS grant in the, in the finance section of the budget, and then we have these other revenues. So you'll see that the Board of Selectmen initially approved a one point eight million dollar revenue budget for the Board of, for the, for the Finance Department. When the Board of Finance approved the budget, we made some adjustments. We revised down our projections on interest from one point one to eight hundred and fifty. As you are aware, we are currently in the process of doing an RFP for our investment services with the hope of generating some additional returns on our investment. We did receive an update from the governor once the budget was approved, and so we had a better number of the ECS. So that was adjusted to three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and then we had other revenues at three hundred and sixteen. So overall, revenues that are booked within finance are one point five million. Under the tax assessor budget, we have typically booked the payment in lieu of taxes, and when this budget was presented to the Board of Selectmen, we had a number of a hundred and one thousand, which is what we've been receiving for the last couple of years, as you can see, these actual revenues and what we've received year-to-date. In the governor's proposal, that pilot revenue was actually taken out, that allotment for, for the town of New Canaan and other towns. We tried to inquire as to why, and I reached out to, to Tom O'Day and some of our other representatives, and it wasn't clear why New Canaan and other towns, this particular revenue line was wiped out, but it was. And so when the Board of Finance approved the budget, we approved the budget based on the governor's proposal, and so we did take that a hundred and one thousand off of that, off of that line. Town Tax Collector is where we book our mo, our tax revenues, current taxes, prior taxes, and any liens and interest and fees that we charge to that. You'll see that when the Board of Selectmen approved the budget, there was total tax revenue of a hundred and forty-two million. With the changes that the Board of Finance made on the expenditure side, the one forty-two million revenue was reduced to one thirty-nine, because obviously they approved a smaller budget than what came to them from the Board of Selectmen, and therefore tax revenues were adjusted down one forty-two point seven to one forty point three net. Conveyance fees and other revenues in the town clerks were kept flat at one point two million. Building permits was kept flat at nine hundred and fifty-three. We do project a, we, we somewhat kept this revenue flat year-over-year, eight hundred and thirty, just looking at current building activity. You'll see that year-to-date, we're at six hundred and thirty, and this was as of two weeks ago, and so we feel like eight thirty is probably in line with closer to where we will end this year and also what we've projected for next year. We talked earlier, I believe this was in the Board of Selectmen meeting earlier, that the Parking Commission did approve some resumption of the permits and fees that we're going to start charging this year. We did have a reduction. You'll see that in this fiscal year, we adopted a budget of one point three, but the town suspended collection of permit fees, and therefore right now we're looking at one forty-one. With the changes that were made by the Parking Commission, the resumption of fees doesn't go into effect until July one, and therefore we don't anticipate additional revenues parking permits this year. So this is a big hit year-over-year, and as we mentioned earlier, some of the recovery funds that was recently approved can be used to offset revenue losses due to COVID, and so we anticipate that we would be able to make up some of this loss in the upcoming year. But going into fiscal year twenty-two, we are projecting a one point one million dollar revenue stream, slightly down from what was approved this year, but it is still early. We don't know what the parking commute trends are going to be post-COVID, and so this number could be high, but we'll monitor this number as we continue, as we continue with the budget. But again, some of those recovery funds could offset. So all in all, general government, which accounts for the majority of the revenues coming to the town in the general fund side, is one forty-five point three million, a decrease from the one forty-eight million that was approved by the Board of Selectmen in their budget.
Linda, can I ask, can I ask you a question on this? Is, is there a line in here someplace for revenues coming in as a result of, of COVID reimbursements that we've applied for or other grants to the town, to the town from the federal or state government? Is there anything?
No, and this is a discussion that I think, I believe we had at the last meeting. We have not budgeted for any of those, and so our intent is whatever does come in will allow us to offset some of these increases. You recall some of the special appropriations that were done last fiscal year and the beginning of this fiscal year were not budgeted, and they're drawing down from the fund balance. So any revenue that does come in will keep us whole in a sense from the special appropriations that were, that were approved this year. But we are not, we're not budgeting any of those COVID funds in this budget at this time.
What is the total amount of that special appropriation that has to be, that i- in the end has to be reimbursed, or we have to pay for out of the general fund?
Well, the special appropriation that was approved for the, for the Board of Ed, we did four hundred thousand at the close of last fiscal year and about one point five this fiscal year, so there's one point nine for the Board of Ed. But then there were some expenses on the town side that have, that have yet to be reimbursed, that we've had. I think last year we ended with almost three hundred thousand in COVID expenses, and we have about three hundred or so thousand in COVID expenses this year as well.
So that'll, that, that, paying for that will offset roughly, I don't know, two, two point one or something million dollars coming from the Fed, from any government before we actually start to have a plus up to this budget. Is that right?
Yes, roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll quickly run through the departments in the, in the general government side. We have this non-departmental a hundred and fifty thousand. This is projected salary savings townwide, just from turnover. And so we've plugged that number in as an anticipated savings. Board of Selectmen, you'll see that the, the change from the Board of Selectmen approved to the Board of Finance approved is fifty-seven hundred, and the fifty-seven hundred essentially is the prorated amount for that change in the first selectman salaries together with social security payments. It comes up to fifty-seven hundred effective December one. If the Town Council should approve that, that's, that's there. If the Town Council does not approve that, then essentially the Board of Selectmen, the Board, first selectman's budget will revert back to what was approved by the Board of Selectmen, which does not include that, that increase. Finance total budget was reduced eighty-three, eighty-three thousand. This was primarily in the internal audit function. It was the view of the Board of Finance that the budgeted amount for the internal audit function could be reduced. In discussion with the Audit Committee, they were okay with doing that, just because this is, obviously, we're just coming back from COVID and we'll reassess. There is still some internal audit funds in there, but the Board of Finance was just to, to be a partner in this process did reduce that funding by that amount with the hope that in fiscal year twenty-three, when we do the budget and after they've completed their appliance for the internal audit function, that funding could be resumed. The HR budget was increased seven thousand by the Board of Finance. This is largely for the costs related to our outsourced payroll, ADP fees. They charge us a flat fee for doing our payroll, but then there's also additional fees that they charge for additional, based on the headcount during the summer, when we have summer help and so forth, and that is based on the number of, of employees we have. And therefore, we were projecting, when this budget was approved, about a seven thousand increase in the Board of Finance allowed us to do that, so we put that in. All of the other accounts were remained unchanged from what was approved by the Board of Selectmen through the Board of Finance. The debt service number is seventeen point six. This is by far the biggest line item in general government. As you're aware, we are working through a refunding process. We have a bond rating call on Thursday, and we hope to be going to market before the end of the month or early April. We anticipate some savings on the debt service number once, once we get done. Initially, we're looking at possibly fifty to sixty thousand savings. We don't know what that number is yet. We may possibly know by the time the Board of Finance sets the mill rate, and therefore there may be opportunity to make some adjustments to this number. And then we also account for our outside agencies. As you can see, these are the outside agencies that the, that the budget funds within general government. Those remained unchanged from the Board of Selectmen through the Board of Finance, and then we do have these contingencies that I mentioned earlier. We have a non-salary contingency of three hundred thousand to meet any unanticipated increases or variances to the budget, and then we also set aside three hundred and seventy-five in salary contingencies to, to address the outcome of the negotiations. This year, we have three unions that are being negotiated. The Public Works, Police, and Fire are all due in addition to the non, non-union employees within Town Hall and other department heads. So that is all accounted for in that non-salary line item. So overall, the general government budget that was approved by the Board of Finance is about seventy thousand dollars less than what they received from the Board of Selectmen. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, but you do have the specific line items of all of these general government budgets in your packets.
Linda, it's Penny. I have a question.
Yes. Yes.
On the, can you scroll, scroll back to the town clerk's budget? Which is reflecting an increase of 6.48%. What are the details in that budget bringing the increase up?
The driver for this is, is one item. You know, they, they have their personnel. You have the town clerk herself who is not non-union, and therefore that salary increase is in contingency. But you do have two employees who are Town Hall union employees and because their contract is active. So those salaries are included there. But the driver here is the, I believe it was a little over 32,000 for the redaction contract, and that's what's really driving, driving the budget. And the discussion with the Board of Finance, there was discussion about whether to include it in the budget or to remove it from the budget. The budget was approved with a redaction amount in there subject to, to review and bidding. If that project does proceed, then we'll have those funds to move forward. If not, that 30 some will remain unspent. But that's the driver for that increase.
Okay, so, so there was no request for additional staffing to handle the additional workload?
Let me, let me double check. I have the line item budget here.
The only thing I could add is there may be a request in the next Board of Selectmen meeting for some additional staff at the town clerk level. She sent a request in, but hasn't finalized that.
Okay, well, that, that's information that would be helpful for us to, you know, be aware of so as we are, you know, having a request to, you know, handle additional workload.
Yeah, I, I sent her an email yesterday asking her to finalize the request.
Right. So Penny, to answer your question, the part-time line in the town clerk's budget is kept flat year over year. So that, that has not yet been increased. And I believe the increase will come from the request that Tucker just mentioned.
But is that, is that just for temporary coverage, coverage of temporary work now, but not ongoing in the budget going forward?
I have not yet, Tuck. I don't know. I haven't seen that request yet. And so I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's for this fiscal year, but I don't know.
It is. Okay, well, I'll make sure.
From your end.
Yes. I'll get, I'll get that information and prepare some background information for the council members.
Linda, can I ask a quick question? Do we know with, given what had, with elections last fall and all the absentee ballot processing, my understanding is that the Secretary of State was giving towns money to help pay for staff to, to process those applications and then eventual ballots? Do you know? Did we receive any money?
We received last year, I want to say maybe eight, $8,000 or so revenue from the state that was related to that, related to the additional, additional work due to COVID. So we did receive some.
Okay. And do we, did that cover it or we don't know?
No, it was a little below. We spent a little bit more than what they, what we got from the state.
Thank you. Good.
And Penny, the, the request, if she brings it forward to the Board of Selectmen, would be through this fiscal year?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Linda, I have a quick question.
Yes.
On the debt service, the 17.6 million.
Yes.
You know, when you look at, when I look at the numbers, I see that the interest paid by the town over the last, you know, four years hasn't really gone down materially. And I'm sure there's some nuance to it that would better explain it. But I, I guess I'm, you know, why, why that number's not going down, but up is kind of confusing to me.
Sure. The principal and interest payment, one, when we, when we issue debt, we have, depending on the asset that we're financing, we have some debt that is five years, 10 years, 15 and 20. So the function of the debt service is largely a function of when things mature over a period of time. And that's why when we look at, when we analyze that, we look more at the outstanding principal versus the, the way that the debt service is structured. Because for example, if you're buying vehicles, if we're financing vehicles, they'll be financed over five years, obviously with a more, more principal payment because it is a shorter term loan versus if you're doing a building over 20 years, you would pay more interest upfront versus principal. So it's a function of the debt, the way that the debt is structured.
Okay, so the duration has something to do with it there. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, do you want to, Linda, move into the next presentation? Or were there any questions on the general government? It's just a presentation. There's no, there's no vote.
Right.
If there's nothing further, Linda, why don't you move into the, your presentation on the Internal Services Fund?
Okay. Can you stop my share?
Yes.
All right. So let me queue up the next one. All right. Did that work?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Joanne. I did exactly what you told me. All right. So what I wanted to do here was briefly just talk about the overview of the Internal Service Fund and how, how the fund works, not necessarily the funding of the fund or the budget that's this year, just to provide some context, because I've had some questions from members of the Town Council. I've seen some discussions from some of the emails that are coming back and forth. And I was at the Friday coffee in the morning. There was some discussion about the Internal Service Fund. And so I thought it may not be a bad idea to just provide a general overview of what the internal fund is, what it does, why do we have it? And then we'll have the Board of Ed come in and talk about their budget presentation. And I know there's, there is a discussion on the Internal Service Fund that follows as well. But again, thank you, Joanne, for meeting with me early in the day because I had some questions myself in putting this presentation together. So essentially the reason we have, I'll start with self-insurance. What is self-insurance and why do we have it? Essentially, we have self-insurance because when you are fully insured, it is expensive. And therefore towns that have, like us, that have the sophistication to kind of analyze our trends and look at our spending, look and have partners like we do both on the town and the Board of Ed with Actuarials that can help us. It is, it's better stewardship if you are able to manage a well-self-insured fund. And if you've seen from presentations from the Board of Education side and from the town side, when we've talked about our experiences, since having gone self-insured, we have both saved, saved money, saved taxpayer money. And therefore the decision to go self-insured has been beneficial to the town both on the town side and on the Board of Ed side. And so, so that's a good thing. We don't cover self-insurance. We don't use self-insurance for everything. We've identified some items within our insurance pool that can be self-insured. But we also do have some categories of our insurance that are fully insured. And we'll talk about what those are and some of the benefits that we've seen that. The way we determine what goes into self-insurance, as, as smart as Joanne and I are, we're not actuarials. And therefore we depend on those people that work with the numbers. They understand these. And they're our consultants and they provide those numbers to us. We have discussions. We ask them to tell us how they came up with those numbers. But eventually we accept those numbers and those are the numbers that we plugged in because they're informed, they go on trends and so forth. And so we have that information to use for the budget. And we bring them to meetings like this if, if we ever need to have some additional discussions on those. And so just looking at the town side, what are some of the things that are currently self-insured? And what are things that are fully insured? What we have self-insured currently on the town side, our medical and our vision is self-insured. On the Board of Ed, and Joanne, I think I tried to call you just to make sure that I had this right, so you can correct me if I don't. On the Board of Ed side, their medical and vision is part of the self-insurance pool. But then we also have items that are fully insured. And just going back to that self-insured pool as an example, last year was a really good year. I mean, we've had good years have ever since going self-insured. But last year's a good example, well, self-insurance really benefited the town. Had we been fully insured for medical, and this is true for the Board of Ed as well, when you're self-insured, when you're fully insured, you just pay premiums regardless of the experience. So had we been fully insured last year for medical, both the town and the Board of Ed would have paid full premiums regardless of the experience. Because we were self-insured last year on the Board of Ed and on the town, we were able to benefit because we had reduced insurance usage for a number of reasons that we've discussed, largely due to the pandemic, fewer procedures, fewer visits to the doctor. So on the town side, the town self-insurance fund's experience was exceeded budget. And so was the case on the Board of Ed. And that's a function of having a self-insured fund. You're able to take on those benefits when you have years like that now. The flip side is you could have some catastrophic years where that, where you make up for that. But all in all, having self-insurance is, is a good thing. And we were able to see those benefits both on the town and on the Board of Ed side. Some items that we still keep fully insured are, we have a joint work comp between the town and the Board of Ed. That is a fully insured. Not everybody does that. When I was in Norwalk, I believe at some point we were, we were self-insured for that. But this is just like any, any insurance. You pay a premium and then they take care of the, of, of the claims. Another advantage that we had by being fully insured and work comp on the town side, just looking at experience, and I'm sure there are similar stories on the Board of Ed side. For example, this year we, our work comp claims have, have drastically increased. We have a firefighter that's out for a year, but then just think of our first responders and the things they had to deal with just because of COVID and some of the challenges they had medically and so forth. And therefore, because we were fully insured, we are not taking the hit initially for those claims. Now, we may take a hit when we, when we renew our, our premiums. But initially we were able to take advantage of being fully insured because of that. We also are fully insured for our liability, auto and property. And then on the town side, we're also fully insured on the dental. And again, as I mentioned earlier, when you're self-insured, we don't manage the plans ourselves. We have plan administrators that manage these for us. But essentially the reason you have this Internal Service Fund is to account for these expenses in one place. We can always go back and say, you know, the town health experience has been X and the Board of Ed experience has been X and so forth. And that's why you contain these funds in a self-insurance fund because you're able to provide that, that accounting. And so again, as I mentioned, full insurance is expensive. We cover some of our losses. They're determined by our actuarials. And then on the town side, we have Anthem Blue Cross as our plan administrators and the Board of Ed has Cigna as our administrators. So here's a chart that you're familiar to seeing, and I'm going to segue into the technicalities of the Internal Service Fund. This is what you're used to seeing. It's the budget of the town. And the two lines that are highlighted are the transfers from the general fund into the respective Internal Service Funds. On the town side, we, this year on the Board of Finance approved 6.2 on the Board of Ed. We're still having the budget discussions, but tentatively there's an 8.9. Last year it was 9.7. You can see in that revised column. It's essentially what happens is these are funds that we, we, we fund from tax dollars to go into those self-insured funds. Now, there are other sources of revenues for those insurance funds because the plan is a shared plan. And therefore we have employee contributions. So in addition to the respective contributions of the town and the Board of Ed, employees also contribute into those funds. And therefore that makes up some of those revenues that go into that self-insurance fund. But again, the purpose of having this fund is, is to be able to account for those. So now I'm going to briefly talk about, and I only have two, one more, two more slides just, and then I'll, I'll be done with this. But essentially, what happens after the budget is adopted? Because we know that we have these two Internal Service Funds. So essentially, after the budget is adopted, our budget is funded by tax revenues. And therefore initially, when we get all these tax revenues, they go into a tax revenue account. Some of these are escrowed from homeowners and so forth, but that's where they land first. For audit reasons, we have this tax revenue account where all our tax sources come in. That's 95, 95 to 96% of our revenues depending on the year. What happens once those revenues come in, we move those funds into a money market account, which is basically a repository, for lack of a better word, we call them idle cash. It's not really idle, but that's the term. And so these funds are kept there. And the reason I bring this up is because I believe at the morning coffee on Friday, there was a comment that our, that the funds that we use to fund our internal service don't, don't earn interest, which, which was inaccurate of a statement because the money market is interest, is an interest-bearing account. And that's where we initially parked the majority of the funds in that account before these funds get dispersed out into the different buckets where we account for their use. And so money market is, is where we park it. And so the last bullet, bubble here is these different sub-accounts. You know, for example, we have the town operating fund, we have the Board of Ed operating fund. And then I've highlighted in yellow our respective Internal Service Funds, Affordable Housing Fund, and there are other funds that are used. And so what the town does is we don't transfer all of that money. So for example, when you approve a budget for the Board of Ed Internal Service, that full allocation is not deposited into the Internal Service Fund. We do a process throughout the year of transferring funds into that specific fund. Because if we did that, we would lose the benefit of that, those funds earning interest in the money market. And so throughout the year, we go through this process of reviewing the budget and then transferring the funds into their respective pockets where they are, they are to be spent. And therefore we monitor that, both Joanne does and the team on the finance town side does the same thing. So we do monthly, we monitor this. And then as part of the monthly presentation that we present to you, we reconcile these budgets on a monthly basis. And these are the reports that you see from us. So we reconcile the respective bank accounts. And so my last slide is just looking at a snapshot of how is the cash flow within these two Internal Service Funds? So I took the Board of Health Benefits Fund, the account now, where the money comes in and the money goes out, and then also looking at the town side. What I did here was just took a 12-month rolling average just to kind of give you a sense of how the money flows in and out of these, of these accounts. So over the last 12 months, beginning with the Board of Ed, we had an average beginning balance of about 4.6 million dollars or so. We have bank deposits. These are funds that go into this account, as we mentioned in this specific year. On the Board of Ed side, I believe it's a little over $9 million is the approved transfer into the Internal Service Fund. So what we do on the town side, we split that into 12 equal installments and we make those 12 equal installments into this fund. Combined with those installments of the town contributions are the individual employee contributions that come out of every paycheck. And therefore on average, on the Board of Ed side, we had about 1.3 million dollars come into that fund every month. On average, there is about 1.3 million dollars of withdrawals come out of that fund. And the withdrawals are basically payment of these claims. The way that these Internal Service Funds are set up, I talked about the plan administrator, Anthem on the town side and Cigna on the Board of Ed side. As claims come due, we ask them to pay these claims on our behalf. And therefore they sweep these accounts through an auto draft process. They tell us, you know, we know what's being drafted. We reconcile it in every month. But roughly every month, there's about 1.3 million dollars that gets swept on our behalf to take advantage to settle our claims. On the town side, we have a smaller threshold. That's about 600,000. On the town side, we have a smaller threshold that's about six hundred thousand. But if you look at these, the deposits and the withdrawals, they're roughly equal just because that's how we manage the cash flow. On average, within each of these fund and the Board of Ed number twelve year rolling average uh this time around, I think we're just at about maybe three and a half or three point seven right now. But on average, the Board of Ed Health Fund has about four point six million and then the Town Health has one point four. The reason I share this slide just to kind of show you the relative balances is this is something that both of us monitor on a monthly basis to ensure that we have adequate funding to meet the claims that are being swept. You never want to be in a position where your withdrawals are so close to your balance that you're worrying about overdraft and so forth. So we keep a reasonable balance on these accounts just to make sure if you do have those unanticipated claims, you are well within uh you're well within the balance threshold that you're going to be able to make up those um those payments. We also set alerts on these accounts. So we're notified that if at any time the Board of Health uh Insurance Fund falls below, I believe right now we've set it at a million and a half. We would get emails triggered to us, just like you would do on your personal account, letting you know that the current balance is a million and a half. If for some reason you had, in this instance, we have four point six million on the Board of Ed. If for some reason we had a huge claim that was maybe led us to we led them to come and withdraw three million, we would get notified way ahead of time that this is the current balance and we would make sure that we replenish those funds um in advance. So there is never any danger of these funds ever not having balances to meet ongoing obligations. The other stopgap too, as I mentioned earlier, currently we fund these, we fund the town contributions and the Board of Ed contributions in twelve equal installments. If we were to get to a point that we said, you know, this is a year, we're not sure. We also have the ability to, instead of funding it monthly, we could fund these quarterly. And instead, for example, on the Board of Ed's side, this year we're doing about eight hundred and fifty thousand or so every month until we get to that full allotment, we could decide that instead of doing the contributions on a monthly basis for cash flow management, we could fund three months ahead of time and and we could do that also. So we do have various methods and remedies to make sure that these funds are liquid and we don't jeopardize the ability of the town to meet any obligations related to help. Particularly in this instance, we have a third party partner that we've agreed that they will come in and they will sweep these accounts to take care of the claims on our behalf and then we review and we settle those. Um, and then for those cata- catastrophic claims that require stop loss, which is our coverage on the town side, anything above a hundred thousand, our stop loss coverage kicks in and pays the difference on the Board of Ed. It's three hundred thousand, the same thing happens, but there's a lag. And therefore you may not get your stop loss reimbursement, uh, you know, six to eight weeks after you've initially incurred the expense. So it is important to have those funds available within the account as you as you make these payments just to for to provide that additional additional security. Um, so so that's all I had. I just kind of wanted to give just some context to the discussion to provide an understanding of the internal service funds. There's been a lot of discussion on internal service funds of the last couple of weeks. And I noticed that maybe in my prior discussions, I I somewhat failed to provide this overview and context just so that um we go into this discussion somewhat informed on how things work and and how the funds are managed. Um, and and with that, uh, thank you, Dr. Letty, for allowing me to go first. Um, the floor is yours unless there are any other questions on this.
Just a quick question, Linda. Uh, you use the example of the monthly release of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Board of Ed. It's at the point when you set that money aside when it stops earning interest, right?
I'm sorry, say that again. I missed the last part.
The town, oh, it's it's at the point when you make the monthly allocation from the annual appropriation. When you make that allocation, from that point on, it stops earning interest because it has to be available to be swept.
Correct, because we basically move it out um, we move it out of the money market into, for lack of a better word, the checking account. And the checking account, you don't earn interest. Now, part of the discussion we're having now with this RSP process is to, we're doing a banking RSP, is to explore, are there ways where a an account like that could earn some interest? Um, it's not going to be as much as your money market because typically, just like any savings account, um, they're limited in your amount of transactions. This is technically a checking account. And I think as all checking accounts, you don't earn as much interest as you do when you have a savings account. And therefore we monitor the cash flow in order to maximize the earnings of the interest, but at the same time also to maximize the liquidity um of the account. Uh, we don't want to jeopardize liquidity over over safety. And those and it's it's consistent with our investment policy. Um, we look at um security, number one, liquidity is second in priority and yield is the third um uh priority in terms of looking at our investments. And that's basically how we manage these accounts.
Another quick question. Uh, one of the advantages, but from a PR point of view, maybe pitfalls of having a fund is that things happen like if claims come in lower than expected, the the balance of the fund grows more than you might have projected. And and so what what people have observed is, wow, we have a huge balance. Uh, but uh that in part, that's good news, right? That's that's a sign of favorable experience. Like the the six million dollar.
Right, you're right. Um, but I think what we do is um be- because we have policies in place. I mean, it's no different than the general fund, right? So you have a general fund policy. If you have a year where, which is like this year, for example, where the general fund has a fund balance of, I don't know, eighteen nineteen percent, you have the ability to draw down more on that fund balance to make up for um, so you're not overtaxing. And the same thing happens um with internal service funds. You look at what your ending balance is, what your targeted balance is for the following year. And based on the ins and outs, you determine how much you need to transfer in that fund so that you're consistent with the policy that you've laid out.
But isn't there a formulaic reduction, at least on the Board of Ed's side? At the beginning of each year, uh, you you're really only planning to start the year with the formulaic reserve uh rather than carrying forward balances that they grow indefinitely, that that there's a non discretionary uh reduction of of so called excess reserves that happens once a year.
Right. Um, and so there's two things because there there is the budgeting side, which is what you what you're referring to, that that you budget to have X amount of reserves any year and you base your budget based on that. Um, and then another way you look at it is what is the actual cash that you have in that account? Um, and are you truly in danger of overspending because you didn't budget a certain amount? Uh, a good example is um on the town side. Last year we provide, we did a one million dollar additional transfer into the Internal Service Fund. If you recall, the budget approved for the transfer was four point seven million. And then towards the end of the year, we increased that to five point seven largely because of how we had budgeted for the for the Board of Education. But the budget does give you the opportunity to make those course corrections um through throughout the year, which is what we did. In that instance, we didn't need to do a special appropriation because on the general fund, we had a significant underspend. And so there was a million dollars available to transfer. Uh, but had we not had that underspend, we would have come to you and asked for a special appropriation because of what we were seeing as far as revenues and trends and basically the same, the same review that I just shared in the in the prior slide.
I think I think we should move on to the Board of Education presentation. And we've already got discussion of BOE budget after that with Linda. So let's go to the presentation and uh and then if we have further questions about Internal Service Fund and the BOE's Internal Service Fund, we can do it during the discussion. With that, sorry to take so long. Dr. Letty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, John, and thank you again to the members of Town Council for inviting us back. I do, before I begin, I just want to um commend Linda and very thoughtfully and sort of carefully stepping through all of that around self insurance. I mean, I I have to admit, I thought briefly about uh sending you an invite to come to our personal finance class and uh speak with our kids at some points because your approach is very clear, very thorough and uh, you know, it was wonderful. Um, well, great job. The um certainly to echo, you know, that these these funds are closely monitored and managed. I think that that's an important piece, um, an important takeaway, uh, that this is something that's actively uh watched and ma- and managed throughout the course of the year. Um, I'll get to the Internal Service Fund in a little bit as we go through. I do tonight, as I did before, uh, I have a couple of slides that I'll use tonight and also may ref may jump over to the budget book or something else. But to, you know, as we were thinking about tonight, this is the first time um that we're not coming in with multiple pages of responses to questions to sort of work our way through. Um, and uh, given how crazy and hectic the the weeks have been, I want to say thank you. For uh, let's keep it, you know, give you the conversation here uh because I'll tell you, every minute of every day for uh me and my staff is consumed by by doing the work that we're doing. So that was very helpful and we're grateful. I'm going to share this if I can. If that's clear for everybody. Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So what I thought we would do is uh, I'm going to just hit a couple of points as we go through. I will try to be brief and um then and then open up for questions and and discussion and dialogue together, which is uh always always beneficial for us to to hear some questions and and build our understanding. Just to begin, you know, and the the last time we met, we really sort of went right into the the budget documents. And I still think that that uh it's the right thing to do, an important thing, because there is this world and and virtual discussions is so different than it is when we're all together in a room. Um, but I just want to just reframe a little bit just to to share. You know, we continue to find efficiency in our operations by in sourcing select functioning function, functions, excuse me, and finding ways to uh to save money. Uh, the the printing move that we made a few years ago continues to yield benefits. Um, the by in sourcing that, we weren't paying an expensive contract throughout the the closing with COVID. So we own the machines, we we're that's saving us money in a variety of different ways. Our maintenance continues to yield uh excellent results by in sourcing the expertise like we have. Our skilled services and our special education department in other areas continues to. And again, running our own special education um transportation system continues to be to well, to provide cost savings, to be highly efficient and also to be really highly effective for our students and our families responsive to their needs. Um, we are continuing our work in implementing environmentally friendly, cost-saving opportunities. You know, we're continuing with natural natural gas. We're installing the condensing boilers. You've seen those in the uh the capital plan, the work that we're doing with uh again propane in our bus fleet. And uh, you know, if West can't get natural gas, we're going to look to bring propane out there. Solar, at this point, we have South and East online. Uh, West and Saks are in their final planning stages and we're looking forward to getting them online soon. The cogeneration work that's been going on, we've been looking at Saks in the high school and planning those out uh to get those going with which will provide lower cost electricity and heat in the buildings, the LED retrofits that we continue to do. You know, the again, the load balancing, so there's not a spike in costs. All of these things are environmentally friendly, um, but also save us money. And they reduce our carbon footprint and have a positive impact um all around. So for for example, um, some of the savings here in electricity, this budget has reduced sixty thousand five hundred seventy five dollars because of the savings in electricity. Heating oil, we're going down over thirty seven thousand dollars. And by in sourcing the expertise and facilities, it's another fifty thousand dollar savings. This picture here on the left is uh phase one of the boiler project at Saks that was completed just today. Uh, it was commissioned by the manufacturer as well. So it's ready to go pending the final um building department inspection and approval. The condensing boiler, as we've we talked about before, it's much more efficient. It uh burns much more cleanly than the previous burners as well. So it consumes less fuel, it saves money and it has a smaller carbon footprint. And these are what we're looking, as you we heard last time, um, to put into each of the buildings as we we've got to um replace the boilers there as they're aging out. But I think it's a great sort of reflection of our overall approach, which is um do well and do good. You know, where it's good for the environment, it's good for our budget, it's um, you know, reasonably priced and the right right approach and the right thing. The and those efficiencies, as you know, as we've talked before in operation, those are big numbers, right? So those help us to to trend in in positive ways with our overall expenditures. As the charts last time when we met uh showed over the last, since two thousand seventeen, you know, the Board of Ed's expenditure had trended at about point six two percent year over year in the total Board of Ed spend numbers in the chart that uh Linda had shared. So these are some of the ways that we do that because of course our other expenditures are continuing to trend up. You know, and that's where I'm just going to go next. We look at some of the large drivers in our budget. You know, we have our contractual increases GWI in step for our teachers, which, you know, this in this budget, it's one point two five one million dollars. In last year's budget, you know, as we look at the budget today, it was one point two two three million. So those are consistent numbers that, you know, we see each year in our um in our contractual agreements with our our staff. Our uh general transportation increase, that's our busing contract. We uh we have freeze this year in the price and then this next year we make up for it. So we do get that saving uh in this year is a little bit. A slight increase in the out of district tuition for students with special needs. Grid progression, that's where teachers go and and earn their degrees. Um, so they move, generally you move up up step each year. You can also switch uh the lane that you're in based upon your your attainment in higher ed. And that costs out at about a hundred fifty thousand. Health insurance, which uh Linda had spoken about earlier and I'll I'll go back to um like towards the as we conclude, it's about one point four two seven million dollar increase year over year in this year's budget. And then, as you know, the healthy um school start and end times, which I'll talk about in a moment, is priced out at a mid-year implementation, a half year price of the four hundred sixty three thousand. Again, these numbers are pretty consistent. The uh grid progression last year was one ten, this year it's we're looking at one fifty. Those are numbered pretty uh well-known numbers. And a couple of these, like when we look at our salary increases, some of these things, we have um, we cost this out. We trended up based on our known employees because we do um have cost control in the system that we use, you know, with munis and those things. Um, other things, as you know, as as a budget, it's an itemized estimate of anticipated costs. And we look, we use our experience, our expertise, our knowledge around what we're doing in order to build our budget. Uh, which, you know, here, as we sit here towards the end of March, um, you know, we start doing this work in October uh and really kick it into gear in November. And we've been doing it ever since, as you know. So a lot of work goes into developing these these itemized estimates, um, which ultimately is a budget. And as you know, um, given the challenges of running a uh a school district and financing a school district, um, the Board of Education is given the framework from the state of the eight large objects in our budget, which um, you know, are funded within. And then the Board of Education moves um the the resources around as necessary to ensure smooth operation of the school district and the operating fund. So on the healthy school start and end times, to uh just touch on a couple of important points here and go into it. And again, I'm moving quickly so that we have time for discussion back and forth. Um, just to share, you know, as we look at this and continue doing our work here. Um, you know, we, as we began this work in twenty seventeen and continued it up through today, uh, we really started by identifying what are our drivers in doing this? What's our purpose, what are in our goal? Uh, and then what are the constraints that we have to work within to build a system that that's healthy for all students? Um, you know, they did, the sort of inauguration of this was the overwhelming research that talks about eight thirty as the earliest healthy start time for adolescents. Uh, and you've heard mentioned here and there, and I know we've we've all received lots of emails um sharing some of that research and and um why it's gotten stronger and stronger. And I would just uh add to it that not only is the research getting stronger and stronger about the importance of the eight thirty start time, but we're also learning more and more about the importance just of sleep overall. You know, it used to be that we would um sleeping too much, getting sufficient sleep could be seen as a sign of weakness. Now we recognize that it's really a a sign of strength because it does help us help everyone to optimize um their own health. And it's not just physical health, it's emotional health, um, physical health and everything else. So that sort of started it. And it was actually a trip to Washington DC that I took and I met with one of our parents from New Canaan when I was there, who I didn't know was going um and got to know her well. And then we um, you know, continued doing work from there and that was back in twenty seventeen. But with that as a start, you know, we I do want to say that we continue to look at every single one of our students. This is not a a, this is not a process where we look for winners and losers, nor do we prioritize one group of students over another. Uh, I think that I think that, you know, when you you look at our, certainly the work that we do every day, the focus that we have as a district, the goals that the district has, the um the focus that we we place on all of our kids and all of our students, everything we do. We've worked very hard to be develop developmentally appropriate with every single student. And, you know, I can give lots of examples. I don't need to do that, but uh I I think you know what I mean. So some of the constraints that we came across with in this first year of research and understanding, you know, we um looked at what is the required time between bus tiers? That's an important metric, because that's how you have, you know, have to determine around staggering. The the difference between bus times and school start times is important. Right now, we say that our school, our high school starts at seven-thirty, but students start getting dropped off at around seven o'clock, seven oh five. And that's a requirement for them, those buses to get back out and get the kids for the next year and get them there in time. And so it's really about what the what is the time on the buses and how do we make that work best? The length of the bus rides, the location of our schools, as you know, you know, the three schools that we have are in the southern end of town. Uh, and they are consolidated there, which means that buses must go all the way up and all the way back. Uh, and when they're doing that, they have to follow the speed limit. And as you know, most of our roads have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. It takes buses longer to get places than than it does you, which you probably know if you're stuck behind a bus and you're in a rush some morning, even if the bus doesn't stop. When should the earliest pickups and latest drop-offs be? What are the best, the learning times for our elementary students? And we really looked closely at Saks and even brought in a um a specific consultant to take a look at this for us to see, can we run Saks on one arrival in dismissal instead of having to stagger them? And really, we we came to the conclusion with their help and research that without some of these upgrades and changes to um the the driveway and uh and the whole footprint at Saks, you really couldn't do it uh comfortably. But I do want to share, um, and I think I'm gonna have to stop this share for a moment and then just start a new one. We, communication around something like this is a a significant priority and probably two years ago, maybe leaving a little longer, we created a website here on the on the um public schools website around student wellness, school starting and times. And on this page, you know, we took some some time to explain the purpose, what our steps, what we have, what our goals were, and I'm of course not going to read through all of this uh right now, but I do want to just share with you um the commu- the process and the timelines that we followed. So I mentioned before, back in twenty seventeen, attending a a conference in DC, um, that was was excellent. And on this page here in the process, communication timeline, these are all links to different articles, research, studies, presentations. As you see, we've um, we've gotten quite a bit of, you know, press and conversation along the way. We've also had a few um logistics consultants, transportation consultants come in and spend some time with us. So we had TAS, which is the Transportation Advisory Board, come and they held some interviews. They looked at all of our routes. They take all the data in. Um, and then they came back with um some recommendations and potential costs. We've held multiple focus groups uh back in the days when you could hold focus groups in person um in the Wagner Room and all of these were open to the uh the public and the press and others were invited to come. Uh, attended other conferences uh with Board of Ed members and others, both locally and even, you know, further away at Trinity College and other places, for instance. We've had held multiple public hearings. Twenty eighteen, we had a public hearing, um, other presentations to the board. We've also had um multiple, we've had surveys, multiple surveys that have been conducted with students, parents and the community. Uh, and really, and looked at those those results to continue to frame, you know, our thinking and and um planning. Continue again, more updates. Um, there were, each of these also, if you're interested, there are links to the actual Board of Ed meeting videos where uh, you know, you they we go through and share the presentation. And I do absolutely encourage anyone who wants to learn more about what we've been doing to do that. We we've held held discussions and and I also Board of Education workshops to uh sort of get get our hands into the information, to get into the data. More recently, we hired a second um logistics consultant, just to take a look at the first, look at the timing and the, you know, sort of some of the um constraints that they identified and and challenges, just as a check on that. And really, they they came to the same place. Because really, when you're when you're developing these systems, um, it's, there's certainly, we all want, we see buses and they don't look like they're full and we say there's more capacity there. Get more kids on those buses. We don't need to get to get more. But it's really not a question of capacity. You know, as much as it is about the the miles in town, the speed limits that we have, traffic and um traffic lights, and even when you're talking about students getting on and off buses, right? So you're always trying to, you're trying to balance all of these things. Now, uh, I mentioned before, our goal in doing this is to create a system that is best for all of our kids. There is always a bias to the status quo and we recognize that. And that's in some of the surveys um that we saw earlier. But we've worked very, very hard to be open to conversations with with the community along the way, with the focus groups that we've held and other things. You also, we also on the site have some internal links and resources, external links and resources and other things. So um, I'm gonna jump back to the other presentation. There we go. All good? So as we, you know, looked at all of these things and over the course of the past four years, as we've done this work, we've um developed, reviewed, discussed and sort of broken apart and tried to build back up fourteen different scenarios. With, and we've done this with the board, with the administration, the print teachers, the parents, others. We've worked hard to be as responsive as possible to all feedback, getting held both focus groups, public hearings and surveys and other things. So, you know, they um I would love to say this is a solution that may that works for every single person. I don't, you know, if that, if it were like, if it were that easy, um, some of us would have, um, that would be our full-time job. Let me just say that. It just, it doesn't exist. And as we look at, and speak with some experts, like um Judith Owens up in the Boston area and others, um, you know, there's districts that try this and they get they get stuck because there's um, there are challenges and there are um constraints, but it's the right work to be doing and we're working as hard as we can to do it in all of the right ways. And so after all of the research and all the work, you know, we we have to um we put to put forward a plan that we feel does create a healthy school schedule for our kids. And the those constraints around then the roads and, you know, buses, the locations of schools and others do put that constraint on us of forty-five minutes as a minimum between the tiers. Now, there's been, I know, some conversation about a two-tier solution. The problem there is the number of buses and the traffic and all extends that forty-five minutes out to be more closer to an hour, um, which makes, which creates other challenges around where do you put the first tier, second tier? And again, you always have to split facts. The um, you know, looking at this, of course, our goal would be to try to move to seven forty-five, try to get that as close to eight o'clock as possible, based on drop-off times and other things. But we have to always bring forward a plan that we know works. And then we work to optimize that, right, for going forward. But what this this proposal does, that the um, that the Board of Ed approved and that's in the budget today, is it is aligned with research around the the appropriate start times. It aligns those elementary schools. And what it it capitalizes on are network school, our our neighborhood schools. Right? We have three neighborhood elementary schools. That means the ride into those schools is shorter than it would be going into Saks or the high school because of the location of those schools. You know, they are, it's a long ride to get all the way to the north end of town and all the way back down to those schools. But putting the elementaries in the first tier means that the that morning ride will be the quickest. You know, you see the other pieces around that here, that the earliest time rate on this would be seven oh six, but that, you know, where we would work to try to make that as late, even later possible. But um, more, one and a half the students are picked up after that seven twenty-three point. What it also does is capitalize on the third tier in the afternoon end time, get those students home more quickly, because you have excess bus capacity, because you're only doing the two grades. So you can have fewer kids on the buses, get them home more quickly, because there are fewer stops. And so the, again, half the students are dropped off by four-ten and uh all of them, the very last student in the furthest run would be that fourth uh twenty-seven. So it does take advantage of um, you know, some of the logistical challenges with the, where our schools are located, you know, here in the town. But it's it's important also, and I I often use this term, you know, our schools exist in a broader ecosystem. The the current opportunities and services that exist around our schools before and after and others also grew up in response to the ecosystem of the start and end times of the schools that we had. As we look to make this kind of a change, I am entirely confident, having spoken with people locally and others that have made a change, that the ecosystem adjusts. So the childcare, right now, there are students that start at, you know, nine um nine oh five at our elementaries. They have childcare in the morning. That shifts, it moves. There's other opportunities that would grow and be and become available. Certainly, the Board of Education is open to dialogue and discussion. You know, we we've been working through this for a long time. We don't want to fall in love with the problem and continue to revisit and to revisit. Uh, we do believe that this is the right solution. That doesn't mean that um we're we're closed to discussion and dialogue about it. This, again, if this were a more traditional typical year, uh, I would anticipate that we'd be spending, we would have had opportunities to get together in the Wagner Room and have some other conversations. But we did um, you know, share it with the community at our, in the in January budget meetings. I meet with the the parent-teacher councils, the PTCs and the PFA. Spoke about it there for a bit and I know that our uh principals are um speaking with their staff and others about it as well. The costs, again, it's the mid-year implementation. And so it would be four sixty-three, three thirty-seven into this year's budget. And then it would be um that much additional into next year's budget to continue with the implementation. The so that's the um, the school start time piece. Now, I just want to take a quick pause and I'm then glad to open it up for discussion dialogue. I know that it's already a little bit of a late night, but I do want to share that um, as you heard before, you know, Linda's been a wonderful partner in this. And we've been working to um, you know, work through the the budget process here. We are right now working with Joe Spurgeon, our insurance consultant, to update the claims projections. And we'll be sharing those with the Board of Ed, the Town Council, the Board of Finance, uh, and others, you know, as they're developed. The, you know, we've talked a bit about, you know, what sort of the the different approach to budgeting this year. And um, you know, we think that uh we've had some good news with the SR two grant uh funding, that that's a little, a little bit more than we were initially informed about, which is good news. The the State Department of Ed updated their um their projections on that. So it's another thirty thousand or so that'll be coming to us, which helps to offset some of the money that we've talked about with the uh COVID expenses for next year. As you know, the main drivers of those expenses are the building substitutes and the custodial uh positions that we need. Those positions have served us very, very well as we've gone through this year. We anticipate a mid-year need for those. You know, when we have the precise number for the insurance, after we do some more projections and look at things, we'll we'll know what the total number is and be glad to bring that forward. Uh, you know, we are hoping and anticipating that in April, we'll be able to um get that appropriations process begun and and ended, so that we can um have sufficient time to plan for the new school year. You know, as we look ahead. After that is is finalized, you know, when we know what our sort of budget appropriation, special appropriation is, where the Board of Ed is, it gives the Board of Ed an opportunity to make any adjustments in the budget if needed prior to the start of the fiscal year. Then we would love to sit together, you know, with the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, Town Council, Board of Selectmen, you know, share ideas and concerns and and approaches to this, to the Internal Services Fund as as we've been discussing and hearing about. Again, grateful for Linda to to share what you shared earlier. Um, and I just do want to say that, and I think it was made clear, but just to to be sure that it is. You know, we don't carry a a margin or, you know, an extra reserve in the Internal Services Fund. We look at it each year, we calculate out, we we budget for a hundred percent of anticipated claims. And then we use the policy agreement that we've had with um, scale with the town since twenty-fourteen, where um we look to fund the forty percent of the corridor, which is essentially to eight percent more. Uh, we look at the fund, we do that calculation and then the rest is returned. And as Linda aptly said, it's, we're running the insurance company, so that's the profit of the insurance company that we're running it. And I would say the last two years, we've had some great experience. What we don't anticipate necessarily um repeating that. You know, as we look at things coming back online, um, but the um, that savings gets turned back, you know, we're able to use that. So that is the advantage of being self-insured the way that we are, and that's how closely we we manage that that fund. So when we look at it, sort of, when we go into the new year, if there is an a balance above that um, above where we expect it to be, that's a good thing, because that means we ran ahead and then we're able to give some of that back. It doesn't always work that way. Um, there've been times where we run under and then we have to make it whole. But on balance, we come out ahead with the uh the self-insured fund and the way that we run the self-insured plan and the way we run the fund. And I'm going to invite um anyone to fill in any blanks that I may have missed, because I'm, there's usually plenty of them. Or we're glad to uh take any questions you might have.
Right, I I would like to, of course, thank Linda. We had a nice, long conversation today about the Internal Services Fund. And I would agree with Linda in that um the cash reserves in the fund are adequate, at least initially in the short term. However, if our, it's, that fund is funded through our appropriation and the contributions from our employees primarily. And as our contributions are reduced from the operating budget, those cash balances will come down, because we'll be paying claims. And at some point, there's going to become a cash need in that fund that will um exceed our appropriations. And that is a concern that we do have. It might not be till later on in the fiscal year, but at that point, unless the efficient, the sufficient funds are in the fund at that point in time, there could be a cash flow problem. And um, it it's not a given that we have cash for the entire fiscal year moving forward because of the fact that our claims projection from our actuary has been reduced by close to a million dollars. And the corridor, the eight percent corridor that we carry for any excess has been reduced to zero. So that's our concern. I don't want to say that um I disagree with Linda's presentation. I think it was very well done, but there is a cash flow later on in the fiscal year that could be very problematic for the Board of Education. And I wouldn't want this board not to understand that um as you make your decisions moving forward.
Ryan, can I give you a a quick and easy one and then one that you maybe a little more difficult? That, I think the easy one is I can you plan adequately without significant disruption? If if the special appropriations are completed in May? Now, we don't have numbers, so I can't reference a number, but in terms of making you whole for what came out of the of the of the prior budget, i- is that, does that timing work for you? Because if it does, of course, it it eliminates part of the debate we're about to have, which is, we don't want to dock taxpayers. But if if you're okay with the timing of special appropriations, then then the mill rate impact is is moot at that point.
You know, um, of course, we'd prefer April, but if we also know that the special appropriations process takes some time with posting and a public hearing and other pieces to it. So yeah, if it's early May, that gives us time to um to make it, to make any final adjustments into plan and what have you. So yes, Tom, um, as long as there's there's motion there, I think that we're we're quite comfortable.
The other question is, uh, young chip, what we're hearing from some uh people is that there's an inherent problem with seven forty-five start times for elementary students, and it's based on sleep deprivation and health. And I just wanted to hear, you know, your reaction. I- is that a necessary result of a seven forty-five start time?
No, Tom, the um, and certainly, you know, I'm empathetic and I understand and I'm not again, pitting one against the other or anything else. We have spoken with some sleep sleep experts about that. We have done quite a bit of research about it. Um, the, every child is different. Um, so it's, you know, there's variability there, of course. But um, the the sleep experts we've received feedback from uh and in looking at this have really felt strongly that this was a better schedule for all students. The, you know, the the twelve hours, you know, that is is on an extreme side of the of a range for children. The, there may be some that do need twelve hours every night, um, but that is not, that's not a majority of students, of children. And again, the the experts that we've consulted, the feedback that we've got has been positive about about this change. And, uh, again, the, the experts that we've consulted, the feedback that we've got has been positive about, about this change for the system. The, so, you know, I'll, I'll leave it at that, right? Of course, we'd like to move it more to closer to eight o'clock, you know, and if we can get another five minutes out, we'll do that. You know, we want to try, but as I've said before, we have to start with the, uh, with something we know we can do. And then we look to optimize it based on what the actual runs, uh, where the kid, children live, and we, you know, build those routes. Uh, the, we would, we do expect the ridership to return to around where it was prior to COVID as well, right? We have to plan for that because right now with ridership is down right now because of COVID and, and concerns people have with putting their children on a bus. Yes, John?
Can you pull up page seven again? I think it really gets to the heart of the school start time question. You have, because it, it, it shows the three tiers. Do you have that?
I think, oh, I'm sorry, I pulled it up, but I didn't share it. Sure, one moment.
I think that the assumption you just made, you, you made in the presentation is that the sleep experts say that all kids, ideally, go to eight thirty. And really, we're talking about one, one of these groups, east, south, and west. So I, 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 I don't think there's any argument from anybody in town that, um, that you're moving to a better solution. I think the question is, have you moved to the best solution? And we're in a town full of tape, type A personalities who say, we have the wherewithal and we, we want the best solution. So I, I think the question is that we have to ask you is, can we put money? Can we invest in this and can we get a better solution still? Can we get that seven forty-five later? That's, that's the only question I see, uh, parents sending letters in is about the younger kids. They understand that the after-school, they understand that there's, you know, only so many buses. They don't understand that there's only so many parking spaces. But I wonder if we, you know, if we approve this and you do continue to work on it, is there hope for those seven forty-five kids?
So I'm gonna answer it two ways, maybe three. First, I'm going to share that the Boston Public Schools I referenced before put their route into Watson and the computer and had it run for a long, long, long time, and they still didn't get to a solution that was implemented. So this is a, an incredibly challenging endeavor. Of course, they're much more complex than us, but it's just, I, I find that, um, to be reflective of the effort. Two, the seven forty-five is a start time, right? Right now, with the seven forty-five start time, the actual drop time is ten minutes before that. So that's where I talk about the difference between bus times and start times. So if we move the drop time to five minutes instead of ten minutes before, then everything pushes five minutes later on the pickup. So you can still start at seven forty-five, but if you tighten that window of the drop time from ten to five minutes, now instead of your first pickup at seven oh six, it's seven, seven eleven, and everything else shifts a little bit later without even changing that system. That's the kind of optimization we would look at first. The next is to say, okay, what if we did move to seven fifty? Does that help? Um, can we do it without impact, without rippling across the system? And again, that has to do with looking at the routes and the distribution of students and whatever, um, but we would look to do that as well. So there's some levers you pull as you look at, when you know where the students live, the buses you have, and you run the, the routes and look at the optimization. Will we get to eight o'clock, not with an eight thirty start time at the next level, or with a nine fifteen at the third?
What if we bought more buses? If we bought more buses specifically for east, south, and west, and found a place to put them and found the drivers? I, I know that there's a whole lot of dependencies, but is it possible?
Yeah, you're, you reach a point of no return because of your travel times to get to, from location to location. So you're now, you're east, south, and west, you can put all those buses, you know, do those runs. And right now, they're very short because of the neighborhood schools. But when they drop at those locations, they then have to canvass the entire town and then get all the way down to the south side. And so the time it takes to do that is a, is a constraint. You know, if you drive down, um, one twenty-three from end to end, it's taking you twenty-plus minutes. And you're not stopping for bus, to pick up kids. So we've got buses that have to go out, and then they've got to pick everybody up on the way back. So you, you know, I tell people this, it's really not a capacity problem, it's a physics problem. It's a time and space issue, you know, that we just can't get there and back quickly enough to condense the, the tiers regardless of the number of buses we have. Now, we would look to, maybe some of the smaller buses can do some of the furthest run. And so there's fewer kids, fewer stops, and they can try to get back more quickly. Again, that's our transportation consultant, when they came in two years ago, did some work with us around that. And we would look to partner again with someone to help with that. Can, maybe you can shave the margins a little bit here and there, and absolutely, we'd be committed to doing that.
Even a two, a two-tier system is just impossible.
Well, when you, when you look at a two-tier system, you, it's more time between the, um, the start times because you've got the traffic that you've got to deal with. You know, it's not, buses don't just, it drives to a spot and leave, right? There's all the traffic around the, the schools that impacts our ability to get the buses in and out of the location. And so now, and you've got to always split sacks. So you're going to have, um, more like fifty to sixty minutes between the tiers, and you're splitting sacks, and you're creating, um, a significant amount of traffic in certain parts of town that our buses are going to be slowed down by and that are, it's going to impact our school start times, um, beyond probably where they're scheduled. So, you know, that's, that's a, a significant issue, and it's also where, so where do you, if you need that, so if you need, let's say, you know, an hour between them, and maybe you can do it in fifty-five minutes, but if you need an hour, starting one group at eight and another group at nine, which group goes where? And how do you, you know, how do you split sacks where you've got a five, six with two elementaries, and then a seven, eight high school and another elementary? Um, you're losing a lot of the game that you're looking at by doing, doing some alignment here for the kids, the programming in and out of schools, you know, and other, other opportunities that are here. Um, if you move the high school from seven thirty to, you know, an eight o'clock start in that scenario, and then the, the next tier of the nine, you're doing an awful lot of work for half an hour to not conform to the research.
I will say, I, I have to hand it to you, you've been working at this, studying this problem since two thousand seventeen. You have outlined a program where you have involved the Board of Education, the experts, the parents, the surveys. Now, people can criticize with this particular aspect, with that particular aspect of the process, but I can't say you haven't ha- had a long and deliberate process. And, um, and we commend you for that. And so I think the Town Council's role, pardon me for saying it, but the Town Council's role is not to second guess your science or your plan. Sometimes we will second guess whether we have the money to fund it. Um, but we can't, we can't second guess your plan. We can't tell you that there's a better plan out there and what it is. It's just not our job, it's not our lane. Uh, last year, going into a pandemic, you know, we, we, uh, you know, we made a decision on our priorities. This year, coming out of the pandemic, you know, we're looking at, uh, your plan, and we're saying, can we afford it? And the, and the Board of Finance has said, we can afford it. And I guess, therefore, I believe that my question for you is, if we could afford more, would, would it be different? And the answer I'm hearing from you is, even if you had more money, you don't have a better plan that we can implement this year.
That's right. You know, we didn't go into this to create the, um, the lowest cost best plan. It was the best plan to bring that forward. Um, that is the, I wish, I think the ethic, you know, the, how we, we approach our work, that, uh, to create the best possible plan on behalf of the, the kids, the staff, the families, the district, uh, and to not, and then to bring it forward. And then if we, that couldn't be resourced, we would, we could revisit. But, you know, it's, money matters, and it wasn't ignored, but it was not a primary consideration or driver in the ultimate decision-making.
I needed to hear you say that, that this wasn't the best low-cost plan, this is the best plan. So, thank you.
I, I do have a, a joke I use about building mono rail. Um, but, you know, short of that, or some other way to move lots of people really quickly, the buses are, it's physics, there, there's, there are a lot of roads with slow speed limits. And, you know, the, our schools are located in the, in the southern part of town there, and that's a challenge. If the, just the high school and the middle school are in the center of town, it would be a game changer, um, for this conversation. I mean, I love the way, uh, the town is built and where the schools are located, but it does put, add challenges for us that other towns may not have to wrestle with in the same way.
Go ahead, Maria.
Um, you said, you know, it's a time and space issue. I totally get that. And, yeah, I'm at the point now, I'm one hundred percent convinced a later start time for high school students so they can get more sleep is a good thing. Um, I'm also a hundred percent convinced that not letting, um, not having, um, parameters that would allow elementary students to get enough sleep is a problem as well. And, um, you know, I really feel like the parents, and, and, you know, not to rehash this, I think parents want a start time for elementary that begins with an eight. And I think, you know, um, there's a lot of research out there that supports, you know, how important, first of all, elementary, um, education is in a child's school career. So you're laying the foundation in elementary school, you know, you have, you need the parents there to support it. The kids need enough sleep, um, you know, the mid-winter start, I have a real, I don't think that's a, a good idea. So, you know, what I'm wondering is, if, if there are, if there's any way to alter time and space, I mean, we did it for the last year with, uh, virtual learning. If there's a way to find time doing something with that, um, you know, I am concerned about students and families struggling with this, so I'm wondering how, how will you address that? I mean, that could be a cost down the road. Um, like, next February, if we start this in January, by February, we could have issues. So, I mean, I, I just would love to see everyone happy in this case, and because I think it's the best thing for everyone, I really do.
Yeah, the, just on, on the mid-year implementation, um, you know, that's, I think I mentioned before, that's not to say it's on the ninety-third day that we would do this, but it's really to, to provide time for people to plan for the, um, resource providers, the program developers, such as the Nature Center, the Y others, to, to sort of gear up and to get their programs going. I've had multiple conversations with a number of folks about that. And they're, they're developing some creative ideas and, and plans and programs for kids, um, extensions of learning and different opportunities. So, um, the, you know, we would need to sort of figure that out as we build into the year. So I'm not going to commit to this as the date that we would do it. Um, but I think we also, uh, recognize the importance of keeping momentum and keeping things moving forward and, uh, and bringing about the change that we do believe is going to be better, um, you know, for all the kids. So that's where, um, you know, that, somebody said in the, one of the very earliest meetings I was at, the, the parent attorney said, you know, Brian, a lot of people, um, think they're going to wait the parents out, but you need to know, I have somebody in kindergarten, and every year matters, but I'm not going anywhere. And, uh, I get that, you know, that's sort of how we do our work. Every year is that, each student only gets one year of each grade. And I will share, again, this isn't, um, just in the big picture of it all. We wouldn't, there are other elementary schools that do start early. I mean, over in Wilton, one of the schools, um, their three, five school starts at seven forty. The, um, so it's not that we're, you know, alone in this necessarily, uh, just as context. Um, but one of, another, I think, positive outcome of this is, you know, students from grades five on, you know, they are, um, well, their, their earliest start would be eight thirty after that, right? So the youngest students that generally wake up the earliest and have the energy earliest in the morning are those ones that would be going into school in the earliest. And then, um, all students would be going from fifth grade on, uh, in those, those tiers, the third tier and then into the second tier for grade seven through twelve, when their bodies are changing and when they have the, the biggest challenges, um, physically, you know, with sleep and what have you. So I do think, you know, there are some of those benefits, um, as well in the, in the system for all kids. I'm sorry, Penny, you, I think you, did you raise your hand, Penny? I'm sorry. Oh, Chris.
I see Sven, ahead, Sven.
Dr. Dr. Lutzi, thank you so much for the presentation. I think it was clear and, and it addressed a lot of concerns. But I, I'd like to make one suggestion, but I don't know what the drawbacks would be at the tail end of it. What if you were to move the start time in the elementary school to eight o'clock and move everything over fifteen minutes? So you would start at the high school at eight forty-five, at sack supper at eight fifty, and then sack lower at nine thirty. It wouldn't, it wouldn't change anything, but the-
Well, where it hits you is the end of the day for your five, six students, right? And those students are pretty, are active in different things around their school day. First, the nine thirty is a pretty late start, right? So there's a lot of time in the morning for them to be up and what have you. But on the other side of the day, it really would, um, cut into other opportunities for them as far as activities and hobbies, sports, and other things that I think is problematic. It is also, um, late for the high schoolers. Eight forty-five, um, is, it's a, and the three fifteen end is a, is a late day. Um, we did, we looked at that, that's one of the fourteen scenarios that we put forward for discussion. And, um, again, felt like the, the trade-offs were too great, um, to go that late with those, with those kids. Because really, when you get to that, that nine thirty start with five and six, the, you lose a lot of, um, program. They're also, they're still pretty, very young, you know, five and six, fifth and sixth grade. So their teachers were very concerned about their stamina at the end of the day. Um, and, um, yeah, so that was, we, we, it was, we looked at it, you know, and, and did discuss it. And that was the feedback was that this, the other, again, if you can get the first tier closer to eight and then, and try to keep the others where they are, I think that is the goal.
Okay.
And we've got to pull those levers I mentioned before and try to see where we can go with that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Lutzi, can you hear me?
Sure, Mike.
Okay, number one, first of all, thank you for killing it. This whole, that last, the end of last year and this whole year so far with COVID, you and your team have just been absolutely amazing. I know we disagree on some things, but, you know, honestly, I have to say, it's like the pride of the nation. It really is, and that's no understatement. I've been, I was in Mexico talking to families from other states, and they were just flabbergasted that when I said, you know, that my kids have been in the school district this whole time. So I really, it's amazing. The school start time issue really, it concerns me on a couple of different levels. But I have to say, I think your presentation tonight's been fantastic, uh, highly educational, informative, um, straightened some things out in my mind. Couple of things I want to call to your attention, and I, I just would love to have your response on it, you know, tonight or maybe in the next couple of days if possible. Um, I did see, you know, I know the research, I, I really took the time prior to tonight, um, reading all of the studies that have been, well, I don't know, but many of the, the, the top studies that have been cited, uh, the CDC, uh, sleep time, there's so many of them, I just can't recall all of them right now. American Pediatric Association, and I, I did, I, I crunched down and I read everything that they said. Um, you know, there is no dispute about the benefit of late, later school start time for the, um, uh, for the high school kids. But there is, there is, there is some research to show the negative impact on, on early start time for the very younger kids. Uh, the American Psychological Association has two, uh, peer-reviewed studies that are out there showing the links, that there's some link to, uh, behavioral problems, uh, and some lower testing scores. So to say there's no science, and, and I'm saying, you said this, but to say there's no science on the other side is, is just simply incorrect. I didn't see those studies on the school's website, you know, I was flipping through what you were, um, pointed to on the resources, the external links. Pointed to on the resources, the external links. Uh, you know, I think it's part, it would be great for to have a fuller discussion and a full appreciation of the body of evidence that's out there. You know, one thing that struck me and I think the CDC's report was they. Uh, said that, you know, there could be negative impacts on the uh early start, on early start time for. The um. Elementary school kids, but there's, you know, really not much evidence. Uh, and when I looked into that a little bit further, one of the things that did strike me and I I read it in some medical journal saying. You know, it's difficult to have. A study on the negative effects of an early school start time because then. You have to basically force kids, you know, uh, just to get into like a laboratory setting and you just obviously that's not happening. So I I can now understand, appreciate why there's obviously uh less empirical data out there. So. Uh, the bottom line here is I know there's there is scientific evidence uh. And studies that do support. A a a show a negative. Um, aspect to an earlier start school time. So. I you know, again, I I we've got a lot of emails on both sides of this issue. I respect every voice that's out there. I read every word that comes in. I don't dismiss anything. And everyone has an absolute right to want the best educational experience for their kids. But there is evidence out there of 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 a. Problem for the early school start times. So that's the first point. The second point is is just on the. The impact of this of the plan that you you know, you're considering implementing. And again, I it was fantastic that you walked us through tonight, everything in the fourteen different scenarios. You know, but the the. Impact to the families that are out there, right? You know, is is monumental, especially, you know, families that have a a working mom and dad. Uh, and how they're going to rework schedules, you know, midstream. It's a very difficult situation, you know, when you're trying to, you know, get the kids out the door and, you know, you know, you have kids and you get it. Um. One of the things that strikes me is on the back end of the day. When the kids are getting home. Uh, an hour earlier, okay? And many families have, uh, you know, they pay for aftercare, whether it be having a babysitter, a nanny. Um, and you lot many times you pay by the hour, right? So if the average is out there, I heard it's like twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour. So each one of those families has at least another. Hundred twenty-five dollars a week, right? Times four, four weeks, you know, in a month and extrapolate that out for maybe a nine month school year. So. There's a couple of thousand extra dollars now in daycare. Or aftercare, whatever you want to call it, that a family is going to have to, you know, come up with. And I'm not saying that they don't have the ability. We know this is on a. You know, this town's affluent, but not everyone has, you know, uh, makes a, you know, a ton of money in town. You know, to me, I look at that as like a backdoor tax increase. I mean, you know. So if you have to add on like another three grand to someone's, you know, bills for the year. Well, you're adding a a another tax on. So there's a cost sec issue that's involved. Um, there's the issue with parents not being able to see their kids as much uh because of having to modify their their their. Uh, start of the day and end of the day times and when they need to get to sleep. You know, and and look, I I we all see the emails from many of the parents with very valid consideration about. You know, the very harmful impact on their families. And I don't know how we can reconcile the problem that you have. With trying to work, you know. Free to find physics, as you say, you know, and trying to get to the right plan and 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 you've been at it for years trying to figure it out. Versus. This whole other problem that these families are going that they will face. It's not that they won't, they will. Uh, you know, and and you haven't said this, um. But I have heard people say, oh, well, they'll just figure it out. I mean, and again, that's not you saying it, but I've heard that out in public sessions and some of the town bodies here. And I think that's. Very callous to just say to these families, ah, listen, figure it out. Don't worry about it. I that's wrong. And to move forward with a plan like. Any plan that is. So impactful to a family, uh, to many families. I I I have great, great cause for concern about. Real harm uh that'll be inflicted on families. And and again. You have to balance that out against the very real concern. Uh, and the right concerns of the parents who want these later start times. It's it's, I think there's so much intention with each other. At trying to strike a balance, you're in an extraordinarily difficult position in trying to accommodate both. And when I look at this as a a scale. The the. It's it's so difficult to get to a balance for. Either side and some one side is going to lose. And I I I'm so it it's like heart rendering for me for both sides to see it like this. And I know it is for you because you are an educator and you do care. You started off the session earlier saying. It was I care about kids. I wouldn't do anything to put any child in harm's way. I a hundred percent believe that. But you are in a such a tough spot right now in terms of balancing out. These serious and very severe concerns on both sides. And my concern about approving. Taxpayer dollars. For a plan that I really believe is going to so negatively severely impact one side of this. I. That is such a great cause of concern for mine. Um, and and you know. If you have any comment to that, it'd be great, but I just least want you to know. I mean, last year we had. Maybe a little bit more of a tense back and forth and I'm I don't want that at all. I'm just explaining to you exactly. How I feel, what I see, what I hear, when I'm on the sidelines and talking to people in town, all these, you know. Multiple emails again on both sides. So. Sorry to ramble on there, but I just least wanted you to understand what my thought process is.
Not rambling at all, Mike. I'm I'm grateful. Thank you. Um, and I think you you articulated it well, you know, for first, thank you for. Um, making clear, I would never say they'll figure it out, right? That's uh, we don't do that. No, 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 no. But um, what we have been doing is trying to, you know, working with the Nature Center, for instance, about programming and transportation to that programming and. You know, trying to, you know, talking with Davy and others at the Y, trying to. Start to kind of build out that ecosystem around, which hopefully would help. But uh. I think you encapsulated it well. This it's a challenge, right? It really is that uh. We want to win win all the time. I mean, this is, I I agree with you. I cannot. And to be in a place where there's winners and losers or it's framed that way is um. Makes a very, very difficult. Decision even harder and. Thank you. Yeah, we'll talk more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Sven, go ahead.
There we go. Just briefly, um. Okay, Brian, thanks for the information tonight. I understand that the major deal is trying to move traffic. Through the lights at Farm Road. And. As you move more buses. Forward into two tiers. The traffic just backs up further down South Avenue. I understand that. Is part of the solution then to widen Farm Road? Because we're not going to buy Lamborghini buses or put turbos on them. And you can't play the minute waltz in fifty-nine seconds, you know, it's a really tough problem.
Yeah. It is, Ben. Um, I will say and grateful for Kevin Tiger and others that were involved with it. The road through the high school helps. That goes into Waveney, you know, that was just put in this year. That helps with our traffic a little bit in the morning and that's going to help us maybe to, you know, tighten these up a little because when we did the original planning, that didn't exist. So um, that could be a benefit. Would it be better? Sure, we I'd love to widen the roads and have a turn only lane and be able to do all of those things, but uh. Yeah, I imagine that will uh, our would take some time. Oh, sorry, John.
We've got time. We've got time. I mean, I think we really do. We would like, uh, you know, regardless of what we do this year, I think that the public is asking you to continue to work on this and improve it and. Uh, and if it takes a creative solution like Sven's solution to widen a road, um, you know, I think, you know, we're receptive to hearing it. Uh, because I think it's, you know, one of the most important things for this community. Uh, this year and going forward. I I, you know, I think whatever it takes, we're receptive to hearing it.
If any other questions or comments?
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
If there's anything we can do, like on this daycare situation or anything. You know, would you let us know? I I don't know about widening the road, but. Anything that we can do to 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 respond to Mike's concerns because they're absolutely valid concerns that. You know, it's a it's a major change. It's a major disruption. It it's big time for some families. It's it's a major, it's it's a it's a disruption for many families. Also, teachers, teachers have daycare issues. I mean, the the number of people that are impacted by this change is phenomenal. And and it I I guess. It seems to me that it came down to a decision. Of do I prioritize those adverse impacts? Let's call them the adults. To the health outcome for children. And I I I'm assuming that. That wasn't a close call for you and that's why we're left with this dilemma because you were focused on the. Health impacted children.
Yeah, and I will say, um. I do think there there's it, we said this from the beginning, this is a community. Thing, community effort, community discussion. The Board of Education again has been very, you know, very involved with the uh. All the focus groups. Many folks here have joined us in different focus groups and different conversations, you know, along the way that we've had. Um, the. Programming needs, the childcare needs before and after and other thing opportunities that exist in the afternoons and the programming. Um, I think that there's wonderful opportunity there and would welcome and and encourage. You know, participation and conversation to help to build that out for kids. Um. So yes, I think there is a there. I learned early, don't say no when people offer help and uh. Lots of opportunities, I think, for uh. Community wide engagement.
If there are no further questions, I think we're winding down.
Oh.
This is over to after ten o'clock.
One more question.
Good, okay, go ahead.
Dr. Lutzy, have you reached out or the administrators uh reached out to Cider Mill to see how? They are dealing with the implementation. I mean, I think it's been nine years that they have the seven forty start time. But have they any reached out for any feedback on how it's working?
Yeah, actually I visited. I went over and uh spent a morning and an afternoon there and I speak with a superintendent a couple of times a week. Um, there they start at seven forty and actually their drop off is about around seven thirty. Uh, it's it's a large school, as you you may know, so it takes some time to drop in for the kids to get to there. So they do about a seven thirty or so drop with kids. They do orchestrate it very well. So the buses are, they line up, they drop, you know, and then they they roll out. But. Talking to the the teachers and to the kids, I didn't talk to parents, but talking to them. Uh, they had, they liked it. They had no problem with it, you know, um, some of them are picked up before seven. Because again, Wilton, where the school is located and they're driving. Um, but according to the administration and a couple of fifth graders that I talked to. Um, you know, this is it's just. What they do.
Right. And that's been what, nine years?
I think that's right. I'd have to check to make sure, but it's been some time. Yep, it's not a new change. Yep.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further questions or comments, and uh, we're going to wind this meeting down. We do have a Thursday public hearing. I'm sure school start times is going to be a a big topic on Thursday. And uh, and then we have the vote after our public hearing uh next week. So um. So there's one more chance to uh to to make your opinions heard by the Board of Ed and the school administration. If there's nothing further. Uh, I think Rich, I think that you decided you were going to um postpone the conversation.
Yes.
Right.
It's it's late now. We'll postpone into another meeting.
Okay, so we're going to postpone the conversation on the town's balance sheet to another day. Do I have a motion to uh, motion to adjourn?
What about Sven's motion?
What was Sven's motion?
That was the discussion.
Wanted to have the discussion, was it?
Didn't we just have it?
I don't know.
I thought we were having it, Tom. If there's something more you want to add, Tom, jump in.
Oh, I thought you wanted to talk about the budget. No.
I did too.
This is great.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has an appetite to now discuss with each other what we just discussed with Dr. Lutzy. So I think I think we're done.
I I make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Um, Steve, okay, raise your hands. Uh, okay, it passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. See you on Thursdays.
Thanks, everyone.